Welcome to the April 14, 2011 meeting of the Milton Planning Board. We are in the Carol Blute Conference Room at Town Hall and it is my understanding that this is the first time that live proceedings have been issued from this conference room. Is that correct?
We hope. I think it is.
Assuming people at home can hear us, it's the first time.
All right, so that's the -- we look forward to being here.
Many more times.
Many more times. We can thank Emily for the lavish decor.
I don't have, you know, consulting help.
She did the Selectments Conference Room, too.
We're going to start our meeting by noting that we have no minutes to --
We do.
We do. Well, I haven't read them, so we're going to put this over.
Introductions, Ellen.
What?
Introductions.
Oh, yes. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman.
Bernie Lynch, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
Ed Duffy, Secretary.
Peter Jackson, member.
Diane Halligan, Secretary.
And Mr. Clark, the town planner, will be with us shortly. The next meeting will be on April 28 at a location to be determined, perhaps the Council on Aging.
To keep.
Then we're going to meet on May 12 and May 26 and we'll probably meet at least once during town meeting. Citizens Speak offers an opportunity for citizens to speak to the planning board about matters that they think the planning board should be aware of. What citizens, which, or are there citizens who wish to speak?
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue.
Have a, please sit down and maybe, are the microphones in a good position for her?
I'm standing because I intended to be here only briefly at the Citizens Speak. My concern is that the agenda has been changed and that the public hearing scheduled for 6:45 for 36 Central Avenue has been reduced in time from the original agenda to 15 minutes. I do intend to speak at that meeting, but I assume Mr. Zinklitz is here, too, and of course, the builders will be here. I hope that we will be given the opportunity to express our views at the public hearing.
We're not going to, we're going to take enough time to process that matter in a proper way. We're not going to, if, if the seven o'clock hearing has to be started later, as it may well have to be, so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Are you sure there's nothing else you'd like to talk to us about?
You've got two items here anyway, so from beginning and the end of the night, you get me for the whole night. Thank you so much.
All right.
How would John's flowers?
John has had some health problems, but I think he's getting better and he's going to, he's got it.
Yeah, I saw him working out there yesterday, so.
I think.
I saw him working out there yesterday, so, yeah.
Hello, John, if you're watching.
Now, it seems to me that our, and Mr. Clark would be useful for this. We were discussing last time outside of the public hearing on 131 Elliott Street whether or not the building is safe.
Oh, right.
And we were, we asked the town planner to get additional information about what the requirements for a vacant building of that sort are, because we, obviously, they require that they, that they complied with. And Mr. Clark not being here.
He can't fill us out on that information.
Means that we're not going to, we're not going to be able to discuss that right away unless someone knows what the law is.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if Bill has talked with building inspector and the fire chief, or both, I don't know.
Well, that's, of course, the question.
Yeah.
I mean, we want to, we want the, we have a letter from the former fire chief who is concerned that if that building had a fire, it would be a dangerous situation.
In addition to conservation issues, Al, with the drainage going into the offensive river, any firewater that went in there would take everything to the river with it.
Would go into the river, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, the drainage connected directly.
And I believe that there is asbestos in that building.
I think it's a high priority.
So we will await Mr. Clark to, to give us a further report. Now, it does seem to me that we should discuss our master plan.
So what you're trying to tell me is we've got eight minutes to fill to the public hearing and you'd like me to fill at least some of them.
I would, you have had plenty of time to, to consider what the, what the next step should be in master planning. It seems to me when last we spoke, you were going to prepare a synopsis of the essay questions and the survey.
That's true, I was, wasn't I? That was quite a while back. I did have a synopsis, which I think you've all had a chance to read, of the multiple choice questions.
Yeah.
I do not yet have the synopsis of the survey. I had a look at it and it may be beyond my current knowledge to deal with. There's a lot of information in there, to be fair. And we talked about forming a committee to look into it, which we haven't done, but we've also talked about the difficulties of funding. And I heard relatively recently, as in within the last few months, that there may be grants available for it. And that was my next step, to find out if that's actually true. Because if it is, then we wouldn't have to spend town money in doing that.
Would these be state grants or federal?
State or federal. I, that's, you know, I heard.
Stimulus grants.
Stimulus grants, even better. The information I had, and it wasn't good information, was it, was state grants. So I will follow up on that.
Mr. Jackson, you have it.
But, before Pete, there is one other thing, which is Bill had asked me to hold off on doing a lot of work on the master plan because of the East Milton parking study going on, because he felt some of the information from the parking study would feed into the master plan and he thought it would be fair to let that process finish prior to moving into the next stages.
That's an excellent report. Mr. Jackson, do you have something to add on master planning before we go to Mr. Clark on fire prevention?
Relative to grant programs, the MAPC does have an assistance program for municipalities that we can apply to, either using their staff or getting grants for outside staff. And perhaps doing an analysis of those essay questions, you know, if we can get some support or some staff time from MAPC who might be able to develop a method or might be familiar with the method of addressing those, that might be a good use of that resource. But, of course, like every place else, their budget, you know, is not rosy for the coming year, so.
Right.
Now, Bill, while you were out, we were discussing Mr. Larson's letter to us last time, expressing concern about the building at 131 Elliott Street. And since this is not a part of the, the public hearing, the condition of the building, it simply is a matter of concern to the planning board to make sure that the building is equipped entirely the way it should be equipped to forestall any disastrous fires. What do you, what did you find out, if anything? Or are you still working on it?
I did, the system inside is not expected to be working. The heads that are inside do not work. It does work on the outside, it doesn't work on the inside.
In other words, the.
The box was tested, the box was tested on the outside. Nobody went into the building because of the floors inside. The fire department is not going to take and connect to the system that is on the outside. They're going to take and stay back and fight it from the corners. They're not going to connect to it because they will not put a vehicle within the fall zone of the building. And the standpipe is up against the building. They have no intention of getting a truck anywhere near the fall zone to that building.
Well, shouldn't the standpipe be further away from the building?
No, it's constructed to be up against.
From the stand that standpipe out to the curb.
The building is fairly close to the curb within a single feet.
But how, how do we, how do we, if there is a fire, we are depending on Ms. Donovan to spot it and give us a call?
No. The box on the outside of the building will pick that up. The amount that happens goes through.
Eventually, eventually it'll pick it up.
Yes.
But why, shouldn't the, the heat sensors in the interior of the building be working?
They're not going to send somebody into the building to have them checked because of the condition inside on the, inside of the building.
Well.
The floors inside are that far gone.
Couldn't we ask the owner to have an independent contractor go in and get a certificate?
We put it at that point, that the fire department is not going to send their people to have it checked.
All right, we don't want to send the fire, yes, yeah.
Don't we want to know what's inside the building, number one?
Fire department knows what's inside the building.
What is it, what is it though?
There's nothing. There's just old walls, old floor, lots and lots of water. No, the machinery is all gone.
No chemicals?
No chemicals.
How do they know that, from previous inspections?
They've been through the building.
From previous.
The fire department has been through the building.
Well.
The floors inside are so squishy, they don't want to, they're not sending somebody in to find out how safe they are.
Shouldn't the building be torn down?
It is not in a condition that it needs to be condemned.
Why? You can't go inside it because it's unsafe.
Building commissioner has deemed that it is not, we're, we're not looking to get to the point that we say the building needs to come down. We, we take it down as a town.
Why doesn't the owner take it down?
You'd have to ask the owner, not, not to be a.
It's probably due to the legal issues. He doesn't have control of all the land that the building's on yet. That's my guess, is that's why you won't put it down.
We'll give him permission to take the, he owns, he owns the building over.
Right.
Our land.
Right.
He can go in and take that part down himself. He can take the rest of the building down. He chooses not to. You'd have to ask him why he doesn't want to take the rest of the building down.
All right, well, we're going to, we're starting to follow up on this a little bit.
Mr. Duffy is another question.
Yes.
Did you inquire about fire hydrant testing?
Fire hydrant testing in that area, I did not.
But what's the point of having a sprinkler system if they won't, if it's not charged at all?
Good question.
If we fight the.
They won't get close enough to it. They're not going to take a pumper test.
But they can, they can, they can extend the standpipe to the place that the fire chief feels is a, a safe place to hook up. And then we can test the.
They feel that it would be a better thing to take and fight it from the corners away from the building. They didn't think that they needed.
They didn't think they needed the.
They're not sending somebody into the building.
I understand, but if you pump the water into the sprinkler system, then the sprinkler system doesn't need someone.
They're not attempting to save the building, should the building get on fire.
They're attempting to put out the fire.
It's, it's to put it out, it's not to save it.
Right.
A sprinkler system would save.
But there's asbestos in the building. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want the building to burn.
We assume there's asbestos in the building.
We don't know there's asbestos.
We haven't actually had that confirmed, but we assume.
We do assume, we just assume. Do you assume that?
No, I'm not assuming there's anything inside.
All right, now we're going to go on to the public hearing at 36 Central Avenue and we will revisit this matter again next week, two weeks from now.
Two weeks.
On the 28th. 36 Central Avenue, amended special permanent site plan review. Why don't we have the applicant make a presentation?
Need to pack this one up?
Yeah.
Put the packaging on.
It's an army color, isn't it?
I believe that's Salford. I'm not talking, I'm sorry. Or maybe Salford is.
I'll unpack.
It is very telecording.
The first one is a stone.
You guys want to hear it or do you want to look at it? What is that?
Oh, no, we'll, we'll.
Okay, Emily?
Got it.
Good evening, my name is Paul Sullivan, I'm here with Representative Omer Enterprises. The stone that's being passed down is actually the, the shape and size of the stone, it's not the actual color. Right now, they're leaning towards this color right here. They wanted a larger stone that's less busy and they, unfortunately couldn't get the color, so this is the color that they're, is a preference right now. I mean, the color.
Let's try this one again. What is this? Why do we have this if this is the wrong color?
Because.
It's the shape.
I couldn't, we couldn't get a sample.
That's the shape.
We couldn't get a sample that had the color and the size, same size stone, unfortunately.
Do these come in series of fives?
Uh.
I mean, this is, this is by pieces.
That's the pattern.
Okay, there's.
This would be helpful, but that's the bigger pattern.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this doesn't really save very much to us.
It gives the general dimension, yes.
Okay.
Well, the size of the stone.
The side, this is the size of the stones that they were.
Yes.
Okay.
Which I think is important. I mean, we wanted a larger stone that wasn't so busy on the building.
This is the color that was, and this is the lighter, it's the same.
Okay.
And this is the stone that's going to be on the side of the building.
Yeah, here's the colors, it's one slightly darker, it's two different colors. The top one is sienna, it's slightly darker, and then the next one is a little lighter color.
That comes in the sheet, Paul?
No, it's, it's individuals.
Oh, individuals.
Yeah. But those are the sizes, there's five different sized stones, so.
Do you put it with little, like they do with bricks, the mortars?
This is going over, over wood, isn't it?
It's an adhesive, I believe, that.
Isn't this going over wood?
Some is wood, some, mostly block.
Mostly, mostly block.
So you tie your little ties and stuff.
Well, mostly it's machinery, yeah, that's kind of behind it.
It's put on like tile, it's put on with a mastic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's set like a tile in a setting bed.
Even though it's outside?
That's correct. It's about inch and a half thick.
We just lifted it, it's.
All right, that's the side. And if anyone out in the audience who wants to come up and look at the, look at the stones, feel free.
Sure, yes.
Do you have a, do you have a sample of the stone that had been approved?
Yes.
Yes, this is the exact sample board that we submitted, presented in the original hearings. These are all the pieces that we had.
It's attached to the board, let's see if I can.
Want to pass the whole thing up?
Taking the loose pieces off. There's, on our board, there were two, this represented the stone and this represents a lintel. So this was the stone that was originally submitted.
And what sizes does that stone come in?
Do you like the color?
Well, it's always hard to render.
Yeah.
So it's not.
When we got it, it looked like it was a listing.
Yeah, that's why they bring it in.
So, yes, gotta have a brochure. This is a sample stone, siding, the trim color.
This is the original?
Yeah.
It's a little chaperone, but yeah, that was the original sample.
That's, we brought the night of the hearing.
Okay.
So we're, what we're proposing basically is we're using all the same materials that were on the building. We're going to use, still use simulated stone, the same siding material and, and the trim, same trim and engineered trim boards and the same exterior trim color has not changed either. The brick is, as was approved and so the areas of, we'd like to make a modification is the, the front columns to a trim product rather than the simulated stone. The simulated stone will be inside the veranda wall against the commercial space. The right side will not change at all. The left side, the changes would be at the point of entry where the elevator is, so that that would correspond to the front entrance. And then there's, there's a small jog in the middle of the building that we wanted to carry the water table across and use the siding product on. And, and then on the rear of the building, there's a couple of areas, yeah, the entry of the garage, that we're going to bring the siding down to cover, cover the block area. I don't really have a colored version of that, but.
On the left side elevation, it looks to me like you're going to block up the garage doors with siding material.
Actually, what, what that is, is there is an arcade and then there's a stone wall approximately six to eight, about eight feet behind it. It's hard to represent flat, but the stone would be a solid stone wall and the trim would be the arcade and you would actually walk between them. The garage doors are not on the side, they're on the back.
Okay, that's a bad.
Yeah.
So that side would be similar to the front of the building, like you have the veranda, there's a setback wall and that wall is right now currently just block and we've covered with the stone veneer. And the outer part would be similar to the front of the building where we use the engineered trim material for lifespan.
Want to put it on nasal so the public can see it?
True, I didn't bring it in.
No, there may be one in back.
Turn those chairs around.
But we're going to want it up there so also the TV people can see it.
One other product that we have here tonight is, we did a markup of a column in the front of the building and this is pretty much the scale of the columns. There's a slightly difference aside, this is the average one. This is the material used and the trim color that is on the, on the columns.
Bill, could you run me?
Sure.
I have an interview with Andrew Zaleski, the project architect. I did have a representative at the company, life stand company come to my office. I did get a pre-launch, I admit, full disclosure, but they did explain how this product came about. And what they used, they used a wood preservative. And it was interesting, they had a type of wood, it's a pine wood, and it has very large pores, and it was a real problem because if people built stuff out of it, they very quickly weathered and deteriorated because it was so porous. And what they found was they could actually use that to the advantage, that instead of pressure treating, this wood is so porous, it actually sucks in the chemicals. So they used chemicals that are FDA approved, actually, they use them quite a bit in the Midwest for, they use them with corn and silos and things like that. So they're actually food-related preservatives. They don't use copper or anything like pressure-treated wood. So it's a very different technique. And this wood absorbs the preservatives. They just extended the warranty to 30 years because it was 25 years and they found that all this stuff was 30 years old and it was still fine, so they've extended it to 30 years and they've seen really no deterioration at all. It's, it's a very good product, it is wood. We've had a lot of trouble with the plastic products because the sun would hit them and they'd expand and contract. This is a beautiful, has a beautiful clear grain, there's no knots, there's no checks. And it is warranted at this point for 30 years and possibly as time goes on, they may actually extend that. It is a wonderful product for this type of use. It's extremely stable, it doesn't cup, it doesn't check. It does come primed. Again, I like to compare it to pressure-treated wood, which repels paint. This is just the opposite. This comes pre-primed and it does really hold the paint. It doesn't, the paint doesn't flake off or bubble up. It is a, it's an American company, the chemistry was invented in New Zealand, but they do grow, it is a plantation grown wood, it's renewable, it's a faster growing wood because of the open grain. I think this is really a coming thing. We kind of swallowed the plastic product when they came along because it didn't rot and it lasted a long time, but we did find there was a lot of other downside to, especially the fact that it expanded and contracted a lot more than wood. This is wood, so it doesn't behave that way, yes.
Is it susceptible to wood destroying insects?
Not at all, not at all. It's, you could use it, it's termite resistant, it's really very, very durable wood. The, I mean, the chemistry gets inside it so that the water can, it won't absorb water once, once it has the chemistry. It's very safe, as I said, it was a FDA approved for food preservatives, so it isn't something that, again, with pressure-treated wood, you couldn't use in a playground because the kids might get in contact with it. This doesn't have any of that sort of problem.
And this would be used on everything that's sort of off-white on the front elevations?
Well, yeah, on the, on the columns and the arches.
Corner boards, the other window trims.
That whole, that whole level of trim, yes.
The window trim, soft and facier.
How often do painters? Is, is the color always wool or just a surface?
No, no, it's a primed wood. You paint it with, with ordinary paint. You would repaint it, I would think, when the paint starts to fade and so forth, it'd be more a problem with the paint than it is with the wood. It would be like any other paint, after a while, you want to refresh it and get a, get a new coat, but it should not have the problems of peeling and bubbling that we would have on the ordinary wood.
Was it oxidized like other paints and always make it look fresh, or at least the purity is?
Again, you could use any kind of paint on it. I mean, I do have that type of paint on my house, it's a little hard to repaint with it, but I mean, it's, that's really not paint, not, not the wood. The wood comes primed, but it has what they call fairly universal primer. You could use the oil-based paint, you could use the water-based paint. It's, it's a primer that will accept most paints.
Okay, questions by the board?
Yeah, I have a question. You had a site walk a couple of months ago now and at that time, you were talking about replacing the stone under the arcade with the clavage you're using elsewhere. Why have you changed back to the, to the stone under the arcade?
The original design was the stone.
Correct, yes.
At the last meeting, we heard pretty clear, stay with the original design, but.
We thought the look would be a lot better, too, you know?
We thought that with the wood out front and then the stone inside would be a nice combination.
Okay.
And we still have the trim on the, there's a bay window in there that's all trimmed out, going to be panels, casings on the windows and doors. The doors have a significant amount of trim around them, so it'll be a nice appearance, we believe.
I think the other advantage architecturally is we really developed the final finishes out, is we will have some lighting under that ceiling. I mean, so I think the lighting on the textured stone with the white trim, it's very, very attractive, very rich.
Other questions by the board?
I have some comments, I guess.
All right, comments by the board.
I was hoping to hear from others, but I'm not a fan of the new stone that you're proposing. If the approved stone is at a larger, it's large enough size, I was told that this stone If the approved stone is at a larger, it's large enough size, I was told that this stone was better because it was in bigger sizes, um, but, um, I don't particularly like the color, and if that sample board is under that, Bill, can you move the top one there?
Yeah, we're open to other colors.
If that sample board is, you know, supposed to show the standard installation, the roughness and texture of that.
No, that's, that's not the texture.
This is the color.
That's, it's a much smoother stone. Unfortunately, they didn't have both, and as far as, you know, the color, it's, uh, when you do a printout, it looks like one color. I mean, we're open to do a lighter stone or a darker stone, it, I don't think there's any, we're not set in the color.
Yeah, because one of the pictures that you submitted to us, again, is a very rough texture, and I don't think that's...
I don't think this stone is that rough, I mean, that doesn't look too bad. Uh, this is definitely rough, this, this, the color sample is rough, there's no doubt about it, but that, that was a relatively smooth stone.
So why are we proposing a change in stone? Because we had an approved stone.
Um, the manufacturer that we're working with, they just felt this was a better stone.
Why?
Masons.
Why, why did they think it was a better stone?
Uh, the, the mason had used this before and had, had good success with it. But if, you know, if the color was an issue, we'd definitely consider another color.
Well, will the color, if we pick a color, will it be generally, uh, the same with some mild variations? In other words, that's sort of red and tan and gray and the, I mean, the, the sample is not all the same color.
The sample, every stone would have been exactly that color, but just one, you know, like concrete block would have been just one color.
The original sample, you say?
This will, this will have some variation.
This has a variation. The original one, when we looked at it, it's just, it's just one color.
So it would look sort of like it might be poured?
It, yeah, it would, I mean, it, there is no color variation in that at all, that is, that is the color. It's meant to look like limestone and...
All right, well...
Maybe we could do is...
This one has a little bit of variation, um, you know, it gives it a little more interest.
We could order a little bit of the stone and, and get the actual stone with the color and, uh, put a little sample together and notify, uh, the board as soon as it's ready. I mean, we could still do all the other work while we're, um, so that you could actually see it, Peter, if you like, uh...
And then what would you propose for the ban stone?
Before we put it up?
Showing the different stone for ban stone, we picked out two different stones, both color and texture, one for the ban stone and one for the veneer stone.
Uh, we're not really proposing a ban stone, we're proposing a trim at the top and then the field of stone.
So that's a change, you want to change the ban stone from, from stone to something Is that right?
I don't know how to, I don't, I never really saw it as, as ban stone, but...
That's what was approved?
Yeah.
Your drawings.
Well, what we're proposing is to use more of the, the trim, to continue that line of
So it'd be the same color, otherwise you'd introduce a third color, um, between the trim, um, the brick. So if you'd like, we could put a sample up of the stone before we get, you know, we got a small sample, and we'll, we'll put it up in the building so you could actually see it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I kinda let, we worked hard on the ones we approved, and I thought we had a very nice design with the shimoey covered colored, uh, ban stone, that was a finer texture than the veneer stone, and then the veneer stone was, was a little bit darker and a little rougher in texture, and the cambria was the color we selected, and, you know, look, looking at this that I got off the internet, it doesn't look like a, you know, it looks like a richer color, not that it's all, you know, one uniform color, so... Personally, if, if the stone is, is basically the same size, I like what we selected, now if a different manufacturer has a, a color that's close, I, you know, I can see that, but to go to a radically different stone, that's, you know, a lot different, I don't think it improves the look of the building.
Yes.
Paul, can you direct us to a building in close proximity to Milton that this, this, these technology dudes?
Uh, I'd have to ask the mason if he's used them in, I don't know, I, I would doubt he's used them in Milton, there's not much construction in Milton, so, uh, it would have to be outside of Milton, but I, I'll see if I could find, um, a location where you could see the stone. What I think I could do is just, we could get a sample, we'll put it right up on the building, uh, near the driveway, so you could see it, uh, where that other limestone sample that was done there, we could, uh, put it in that area, so you could actually see the stone, the color, the texture, and, you know, see if it's a satisfactory...
Other comments by the board?
Are we just talking about the stone now, or are you talking about everything?
Talk about anything, anything at all.
Um, I'm confused by this drawing that you sent out today as to what the various materials are in different locations, so can I just maybe point here and ask some questions?
Sure.
Um, inside these arches, that would be the stone here.
That's the utility area in there, which is...
That's part, part of the same back wall.
Uh, the wall actually, there's a door.
It's actually...
That, that is a utility area in there, but the, the February Walker proposing the stone.
So what you don't see there is the plantings that will be there too, uh, behind the retting wall there, you plant a plant...
We'll get to that. Because that's another change that didn't come out. So what is that area? It's a plan.
It's a fallibility area. I think this would be a...
It's where the mailboxes are, yeah. It's all where the mailboxes are gonna be.
Wait, but what, I mean, what...
This would be the trim, the outer face, yeah.
So the interface there...
That's presently blocked, we were...
It's open to be stone.
The arch that's blocked in there.
The mailbox is...
There's, there'd be mailboxes, and there is not a lot of room in there, it's a very small space. Where people walk, we're proposing a stone.
I think part of that might be framed about, too, I'm not sure.
The original drawings, and it looks like it should be stone, now, there's a reason it's not stone, I don't know. And then on the right side elevation, this lower part.
Yeah, that's the foundation there.
Yeah, and the, and the stone there, I guess, extends all the way down, right? Stone veneer?
We're proposing the wood trim with, with the regular foot, the parched foundation there.
Now, the, the drawings that were approved had stone veneer.
It's stone on the arches, yeah.
No, and on, on this section, this section here, and this isn't a door, right? That's a...
Yeah, there's a door. It's an exit door from the stair.
No, there's a door there, emergency access door.
These, these foundations, you know, I think should continue to be the stone, that's what was on the drawings that we approved, I think the stone should go right down. Again, we're all, you know, concerned about just how blotchy a lot of this is, and we're trying to simplify some of the paint and some material, so, and the, the approved drawings very clearly show that's a stone face. Um, it's a little more ambiguous on the drawings, whether that's a stone face or something else, and there's a lot of plantings in front there, so maybe you don't think that much difference.
We wanted to set the stone back from it, so this would be the trim beside on the stone.
I don't think there'd be much foundation you could expose for your drawings.
The sidewalk is fairly post-it.
Okay. Um, that's all we have. And this wall here?
This actually is, is, because the grade is, is high, it's a planter.
Well, the planter's another thing, should we talk about the planter?
Should we talk about, you know, planter? The planter starts...
Yeah, there's a, there's a significant change from the plans that were approved, and then along that side of the building, there was supposed to be a walkway and stairs so that people didn't have to walk down the driveway.
Yes.
And now they've built something that's different from that.
Those, there would have been, the, yeah...
We, we only had about four feet of, of clearance there, really, we couldn't make it work, you couldn't get under the building there. Originally, I thought that would be a doorway, but the, the grade just doesn't work that way.
Coming from the sidewalk down that side of the river, there's no, nothing overhead.
You, you can't, you can't walk in at this point.
Well, I'm not saying walk in.
Right, that was the original plan that you're referring to, but we, you just can't do it, it, if you know, you'd be hitting the ceiling with your chest, it just isn't very helpful.
Plans, there's a sidewalk and stairs going down, and then, yeah, but you don't have to go in there, this is the way to go. This sidewalk goes here all the way so that you're not, you know, out in the, in traffic. There's a sidewalk and steps that go all the way down the outside of the building along this entire side, and we did that for specific reasons, so...
I'd like to find out why it can't be built that way.
Well, this isn't a change that has been asked for.
But it's been built.
I understand that, but they have to ask for it.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get the conversation...
And it has to be shown on, I, I mean, what they want to do, is, I mean, if they're gonna do planters, I don't see any planters.
There is a planter on the proposed plan.
Where are the planters?
On the, on the approved plans, they, they don't show them.
A1?
No, that's on the approved plans, he doesn't have the approved plans.
But, I mean, we don't know what's, what's in or what's out of the approved plans.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, it seems to me that you've gotta come up with, and all these different colors, it's really hard to, I mean, I, it would be nice if you specified what you wanted to do, put this stone up and, um, get a light-colored stone. Uh, is that what you're suggesting, rather than a dark gray stone?
I think closer, closer to the stone that we approved than what...
All right, and then put that...
The brick is, is, is dark, the mortar's dark, the, I, I don't know if a white, a light stone's really gonna be appropriate, but we could try to get a sample of both.
In any event, it's not gonna be yellow stone.
The colors are meant to show, yeah, where, where they're different.
I understand, but it's hard for us to conceive what this thing is gonna look like because all the colors are wrong.
We'll put a sample on.
I apologize, I went on the website, I downloaded the actual stone off the website, put it on there, but it, it prints...
Well, then, in any, you've gotta put up some stone, and we need some plans showing what you're going to do, what you're going to change, if you, if you don't specify a change, you've gotta do it according to the plans.
Well, all the changes are in these plans that we're, we're submitting tonight, talking about.
But you, you accept the stairs, well, I mean, the stairs are obviously not here, but I don't, I don't...
That area isn't completed either, it's still under construction.
Right, I understand, but it doesn't seem to me that, uh, I mean, if you're gonna have planters here... I mean, if it's going to be according to the original plan, everything's going to be according to the original plan, right?
Obviously, it...
I mean, if there are changes in the original plan, but we gotta know what they are, because you, and, and one change is the staircase that Pete points out, and there are probably other things that you're...
That area is not completed, we're not done.
Nothing has been built in that area.
The walls up. The wall's up, but that work isn't completed there, we're still under construction, so... If we're gonna modify that, we'd come back to the board to discuss that.
Well, let's, uh, let's, uh, let's see what the people think about this wood product. What does the board think about the wood product? If anything, yeah?
I like it.
Okay.
I'm with, I'm with Bernie.
What about, Ed likes it.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll look real nice, as a general thing, you know, as I said, first time this came up, I think that the heaviness should be at the bottom of the building, but I think putting, putting veneer back there, again, I think this lends some elegance and things to that, so the, the change to the wood product, I think, on the columns is a good...
All right, Ed, I have no, I have no objection. Who in the audience wants to discuss the wood product?
And stone?
And, and the stone.
He's coming back.
He's coming back. So am I.
Margaret Donovan, 51 Central Avenue. There's a song that has lyrics that go somewhat like this. First you say you will, and then you won't, and then you say you do, and then you don't. And that's been the history of this project. This is what I was led to believe was the original. I don't know, and maybe I missed out on one of the very early, um, public hearings on that porch, that white arcade. I walk out of my house daily, and I have to put sunglasses on because it hits you right in the face, the color. I've talked to the, um, Moore brothers and said, "Well, if you could streamline the colors, perhaps take the color that's the back over the, over the windows in the brick section and bring it down here." It might soften this monstrosity, but right now, look at all the colors, it's like a kale skull.
But they have said, they have said that these colors are all wrong.
On the plan.
On, on this thing. And on that thing, that the colors, those aren't the color.
This is, this is the color, this is the original color that was...
No, I understand, but the plans themselves have all kinds of different colors, and we don't know exactly what the colors are.
Margaret is saying on the field that...
They're...
This is the...
They're off by the printer.
Green's off.
I had asked, and I still haven't gotten an answer, on why they can't bring the brick down and keep it one color at least, because right now, I look out, and this is what I see, this, I call it sage green, uh, gray, dark gray rubber roof, um, the brick, the, I call this putty color, that's the best-looking color over there, with the exception of the brick. This is awful. This looks like a Main Street, not Main Street store in Randolph, where the framers are. It looks cheap, inexpensive, I'm really amused at, I want this back, but I, this, this should be shown, this would be gorgeous. This is what the realtor is using as a brochure. I, I want this one back, because I have the prices in here, you've got one too. If this building looked like this, it would be magnificent. Instead, it's not. It's garish, it's gaudy, it's disjointed, and it has a total lack of class. The back is the best-looking part of the building, and the reason for that is because it's all the same material streamlined with all a second color of trim, but this looks as though a kid had gone to coloring school, and this is what they came up with, and this is what I have to look out at every day of the week.
That's a printer that tells us that.
I beg your pardon?
That's not the building, that's a printer that tells that. The actual building looks different in there.
The actual building is what?
The actual building looks different than that. I'm not gonna get a perfect...
The actual, right, you're absolutely right, the actual, actual building looks worse.
It's a beautiful building, like everybody sits and stands.
No, it's not now. If it looked like this, it would be a beautiful building. It doesn't.
It's a rendering, that's not real.
I beg your pardon? Now, if we could, January 13th hearing, public hearing, Paul. Would apply stone veneer outside, not good, subject to freezing. Then he goes on to this, material is wood-based product, prime thickens than the azac, is that the azac? I don't know what the azac is either.
This is called lifespan, actually, the trade.
Okay. This is, this is like wood, because it is wood, can wrap around. Uh, things happen, people walking by, if stone veneer can have graffiti, now we're back to stone veneer, graffiti, with this new material can be repaired, gives a very bright look, you're right, I have to wear sunglasses every time I go outside the door. The whole porch becomes a bright area, light up at night, oh, that will be great, more attractive. Paul, Paul thinks this is good, but no stone veneer... But, no stone veneer, because it's going to attract graffiti, like what we have on the O'Neill Building, along Brook Hill Avenue, Brook Hill Road. Paint, how often does it have to be painted? Well, we have one of the Moore buildings in, I wish we could, I'd like these back, one of the Moore buildings in Quincy that we saw on our tour, Louise Valveras and I, and look at how it's peeling, isn't that nice? So, this has to be painted. Well, that'll be great, I'll look across at paint that's, that's peeling, that's nice. I still don't have an answer as to why there is a porch there. Where was that? Was that in one of the original plans? Because I never saw, saw it in the plans I saw. And oh, by the way, look at this gorgeous building, does this look anything like what you just passed around? That's what the building looks like now. Awful.
Where is this building, Margaret?
This is on Central Avenue.
Oh, this is Central Avenue, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I wasn't thinking of that thing. I have seen it up close.
You will come by daily, because I see it every day of my life.
All right, you, you.
I'm not finished.
Okay.
I had to go away for a week, and I said, oh Lord, I saw K and K outside, this is not dealing with the materials right now, but since this is a public hearing, I'm bringing up another issue.
Well, you really should stay on issue.
Pardon? Oh, it's, it's still on the building.
It's a public hearing on the, whether to amend the plan, is now.
Fine, and I'm, and I'm talking about the person who is the point person, who is not able to be contacted. And I think what I have to say is important, because when I was away at a previous time, and they dug up the street, the boulders came down in my car, you all saw our picture of that, the Moores did embarrass me for the work, but the weight on my clock was on the floor, and as Mr. Lynch has seen, the seal in my bathroom window on the second floor was split. This is what I afterwards drew with the, with the construction that's going on out there. According to this special permit that you gave for this project, the Board of Appeals conditioned the variances upon the applicant appointing a clerk of the work or point person to deal directly in responsibility with the butters and nearby interested citizens during the construction of the project, and to mitigate construction activities on nearby properties. Okay, and then that's supposed to go to the building commissioner, and then, if not resolved, go to the Board of Appeals. In your special permit, Paul Sullivan is mentioned here as the point person, so obviously the fact that he's here tonight means he still is the, is the point person. I tried to mention on that number that was on that letter that he sent to Mr. Jackson, when Mr. Jackson was the chair, and number was disconnected, and that was that address that he didn't even have an office at, down in Brian Joyce's office building. Okay, K and K right now, pass, pass back up the street, where they're going to dig it up again. Paul's nowhere to be seen, except down the street, building, putting a prefab, and so I didn't know, what should I remove? I'm going to be away because of the construction that's going to take place outside of my house. I had to go into the construction site and speak to Corwin, Corwin, I never could.
Karen.
Karen, who informed me that they were going to be digging up the street until after our return, he told me that he said the fourteenth, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, and so I was able to go away and not have to disassemble the, the pictures and whatnot in my, in my house, but where was the point person? Nowhere to be seen. He has not informed us of anything since September fifteenth of last year. He gave us updates up until that date, and then none.
Excuse me, can I just say something? My phone number has not changed, nor my email, and I have not received one email from one neighbor in the whole area of any concern about anything, so I'd just like to clarify.
Well, the telephone number said disconnected, so, and it was a number I took right off of the, of the letterhead, but I don't think, I don't think it's up to the names.
It isn't, it isn't germane to, to this question, I don't think.
Well, it is, because if I had come back to Moore's image, it would have been very germane, but right now, so I had to make that, that point, because I don't know what's going to happen next, and I am the one that suffers the construction over in that project.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Now, we're going to take, we are going to continue this hearing until the twenty eighth, and unless someone, we will, except we have a busy schedule tonight, we have a number of public hearings that already have been pushed back, because this is going on a bit, but anyone who wants to be heard tonight can be heard on this. We will have the, a sample of the stone put up on the wall for us to look at, and we'll take further comments next time around, but, yes, Sarah?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, John Zickwitz, I'm the co-chair of Millville Central Avenue Revival Foundation Committee. I'm also an architect in my professional life. We did tour the site about three weeks ago, and it was a little, we were told some things that were a little different than what we're seeing here tonight. I don't see a rear elevation, but the drawings that we were given, the rear elevation was going to step over here, along the back. Is that still what happened?
The, and, no, would be the siding, the clankboard siding, not, not stucco, the clankboard siding would be brought down.
Okay, we haven't.
There is a drawing here that does show it.
Okay, well, what we were going to suggest on the committee is to carry the, the wood product that you were carrying along, along the back.
The trim would go to the arch, it's a combination between the inside.
And then what we were also going to suggest on this, the right side elevation, where it's this exposed foundation, was would be to extend the hardy plank down, and just run that down to the bottom, so you wouldn't have the exposed foundation. It does interrupt that horizontal line that you're developing along the back, but where it is on the site, it's, you're, you're never, you're never in a position where you see those two planes of the building.
Isn't there a fence, well, actually, along the neighborhood? I, I think in the end, you're not going to see that from anywhere, because it'd be offensive about six feet away from the wall, along the neighborhood driveway.
Instead of introducing another element, I guess, if you brought the, the hardy plank down, that's what our committee thought would, would help resolve that corner. We saw this, we, I guess I'm not crazy about the color I'm seeing here tonight, either on the stone. I know this doesn't represent the color, but it's also hard to judge it for me, because I'm not that familiar with the brick, to know how.
This was the.
Great it looks with the brick. But I, I do think something lighter that might tie into what you, the lintels you have over the window or something, would start to tie these pieces together a little more. I, not to further stir things up, but I, I don't see why the brick just doesn't come down.
You mean on the front elevation?
On the front and sides, and not even have the stone. Just have the brick come down, simplifies the building, and gets rid of another element, but I know stone was approved in the beginning, so.
That would be fine with us.
We weren't involved in any of the earlier discussions on the materials, but just looking at these elevations with, with all the different materials that you had there, if you just brought the brick down.
The brick?
It would just really simplify.
We're inclined to agree with that.
John, would you continue the brick down everywhere, or just on the front?
Well, wherever they're showing the stone, I would show the, I would keep the brick.
Okay. That would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, which is, I think, really simplify the building.
Are you talking about the whole building, getting rid of the stone and putting brick?
I'd do the brick.
No, I, I think that's, this is a suggestion that has some.
We've got too many materials at this point.
Can you, are you going to put your comments into a written form?
I would be happy to do that, yes.
That'd be good.
I guess I didn't hear what was in those, is that in the same plane? Or is it just? No, it is, well.
I'm not understanding that portion right there.
It's a little bit unresolved at this point. We're looking at his bicycle, sorry, I thought we.
What's in the arch, what's that gray in the arch?
It may actually be.
Step back, it's probably about eight feet to the wall inside the arch. We're going to put the mailboxes in there, and.
So you could run the brick across there?
Run the brick.
And again, just.
Does this show on the original plan what those recesses are?
Not the arse side, not the ink side.
Well, okay, so, you know, we're going to want to know what the, what the deal is.
The original concept, I'll walk through there, but we just.
All right, fine.
There's no way to do that.
But change the original concept, so that we know what you're doing.
This is whole wall, this is the whole thing, brick.
Does it step in?
That was your thought.
So, I mean, I would think it'd just simplify the building, and.
I, I think so.
And if everyone likes the brick, then that just continues.
You're going to get a revised plan with better coloration, and you're going to tell us a little bit about any changes you're making. You're going to.
I was wondering if we could at least maybe get a decision on the trim portion.
You have, you have basically got the sense of the board that the trim seems to be satisfactory, but we want to see the, we want to see the whole thing. We're not going to, we're not going to take separate votes on this, we're going to continue this until the twenty eighth, and you're going to, John, hopefully get something in writing, not only to us, but to the applicant.
I can do that.
And Bill, what time?
Six forty-five.
Can I just try to clarify something for my own self, as well as for them?
Yeah.
The sense of the board was that the trim was going to be acceptable, you know, I'd like them to, I'm anxious to get this building, you know, completed, and get the barrier down from the streets, so those parking spaces are available, and things like that. Maybe we won't take a separate vote, but I would like them to think that they can proceed with that trim product with, you know, without fear that we're going to ask them to rip it off again.
I think that they have the sense of the board.
And you think that applies to all the areas that they're showing it on?
I think that if you have portions of it that you, you think it shouldn't apply to.
I don't.
All right. Okay, well, can, this is continuing until six forty-five on the twenty eighth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
And, John, sorry to be. We're going, and we'll hear from anyone else next time. Now, Seventeenth Canton Avenue, site plan approval, let's hear from the applicant. Mr. Sheffield, proceed.
Good evening, I want to speak about Seventeenth Canton Avenue, and I would advise the board that this is a rather unique situation, in which the owner of the building came up with plans that really were not acceptable to the neighborhood. We've had a, a series of, of meetings, and I would say that throughout the process, the neighborhood was very sensitive to the needs of the owner, and similarly, the owner was very sympathetic to the, to the needs of the, of the neighbors, and I think what has come out of it is a considerably better project, a retention of the historic nature of the building that's being modified, and something that will be a pride to both the neighborhood and to the owner. I would like to introduce at this point Rick Shaka, who is the owner, and the managing partner of Shaka Log Group, Bill Christopher.
One second, Mr. Duffy.
Please spell your name first, sir.
S is in Sam, CIA, CCA.
Thank you, sir.
And I have filed before with the planning director, the, the names and associations of all the people that I'm introducing, so they're, I'm marked with the board. Bill Christopher and Dagny Elliston from Roach, Christopher Architects, and Steve Lerner, who is the contractor, will be the contractor for the, for the job. At this point, I'd like to introduce Bill Christopher, and let him show what is going on.
Swing that over a little bit, so that the people in the audience can, can share also.
Thank you very much for, for hearing us again. As Paul has indicated, we've gone through a number of design iterations to bring this to a point at least that the butters are, we had a meeting on Monday, and they seemed very pleased with where we are today, so I'd like to walk through it very quickly with you. This is the locust plan, Canton Ave, High Street, this is the site that we're dealing with, this is the existing building. This is the proposed and existing site plan that shows the overall composition of, of what we're doing. Illustrated here, in the white, is the existing building, and the pochette, pochette section is the increase in the footprint. One of the issues that, that's still open, that, that we're dealing with is the discussion about this entrance ramp to the building. By building code, we have to provide accessible entrance at all points of entry to the building. We are in the process of filing with the MAAB right now to request a variance that we not provide this exhaustive ramp system and railing system to the building, but are going to continue to provide an accessible route through the, through the building. In reality, we think this is really going to become more of an entrance to the building than this even for, for people as they come from the parking lot. The building itself will be totally accessible, we are providing a lular elevator in the building, so that the vertical transportation will be able to be accomplished. As requested, and you can go into more detail, we've provided a landscaping plan done by our William Plumbing and Associates, and this we went through pretty, pretty detailed on Monday, and everybody seemed deeply happy with where we're, where we're ending up. This is the existing building as, as it stands today. Existing plans, these have all been submitted to you, and we've also submitted a CD of all the latest drawings of the area here, existing elevations. This is the summary of how the building is planned to be constructed. The first level, as, as illustrated on the site plan, the increase in the footprint is shown in the gray, and then on the second level, we're going to extend or extrude this footprint up to form two stories. This is an elevation that, of what the image is going to look like, but I'd like to look at the elevation first, because it's a lot more important. The organization of the building is, is very simple, it meets the programmatic needs of Rick and company, in order for them to do their business and do it properly. Again, this is. Again, this is the ramp that's in, in discussion, it, it's well over thirty feet, it's at percent of forty-five. This is the, the story of the building. The question was always, how do we add on to this building in a way that it would mimic a New England barn growth? And it's, it's, it's come back to that, by doing a series of what appear to be smaller additions, uh, and changing and highlighting the roof, we're able to achieve that goal. One of the major issues that the neighborhood had, that, uh, you know, we responded to was the front elevation as it looks onto Canton Ave. They wanted no changes, they wanted it to remain the way it is, and essentially, uh, we are doing that. We are going to be rebuilding, uh, a lot of the building, we've been awful lot of termite damage to the building, uh, and water damage as well, so we are replacing those, and we've got material boards here to go through. The balance of the elevations in the building, um, as you can see, we've, we've taken, you know, this is the original portion of the building, this is the addition in the back here, this is the rear entrance that we, we want to maintain as our accessible entrance, and then this is the very back of, of the side of the building. What we have done is we've done some three-dimensional imaging that show the building the way it would be seen. I, I never like, uh, flat elevations, but they never really portray the building, nor it sees one side of one building, it's always about corners, uh, and issues. And since we've made this presentation to the community, the one issue was, again, the issue of this ramp. We are trying to work through that so that, uh, we would prefer not to build it, we're, we're actually, uh, sent some, uh, inquiries today to the historic, uh, here in town to ask them to help us support that this is a historical building, a historical zone, and that we're going to try to, to mitigate that issue without compromising any of the ADA issues regards to access and, and denying anyone the ability to get into our building. That's the quick overview. If you have a tick that anybody would like to ask or discuss, or should I just continue?
Why don't you continue?
One of the issues that was, uh, also discussed was the lighting for the property, and we've got some examples of the lighting elements that we're going to be using, um, and, uh, these are off of, uh, the web, so I'm not sure if that color is right either, I'm hoping. Essentially, this is going to be the predominant element, it's going to be used as wall scotches as well as pole mounted out in, in the parking lot. Here, we've, we've got some elements that we're trying to really hide, and there are ballers that will be lighting the walkway around the building and up in this area here in this patio area. And then finally, these are, uh, just footlights that'll actually be set into the railing system of the rampway and the walkway so that we can provide the required, uh, lighting for egress, you know, in the evening, um, as we go along. Uh, the final one that I have to show you, I'll share with you, is the element selections that we're going to be using on the building, and these are, um, the color of the building is going to remain the color of the building is today. We'll be taking a chip and, and getting colors produced to match that color. It will be, uh, a wood siding, a cedar siding of, uh, clavits, there will be asphalt shingles on the roof, this is the window trim, will be a six over six insulated window, uh, with an oversized trim board and, and highlighted. This is the, the watershed as it goes around the building, typical corner molding, it'll be five-quarter stock. Um, the doors, these are the two main entrances from Canton Street as well as from the parking lot side, that'll have side lights and, you know, the, uh, sixty panel, six raised panels as, as we go ahead.
Yes. Bill, L two. It shows like the walkway run the back.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
The plan I have, it doesn't show.
Sorry?
Right, yeah, it doesn't show.
Have a landscape plan.
Yeah, that's the landscaping plan, opposed to the walkway.
It's only planned here.
The bathroom has it.
L two.
So the light.
I think we have another plan.
There must be another plan.
But, um, we have.
Doesn't have that.
Yeah, I hope so.
The reason I say it is a very good friend of mine lives right in the house of Baggie.
And we, here or here?
Right there, Chubb Peabody's house.
Yeah, we were with him the other night, Monday night.
He's here.
He can tell you what his thoughts are.
Okay.
What is your, I mean, we do have.
Well, it doesn't show.
I understand, but we have another plan.
The plan they gave us today isn't the same as that one.
No. As long as a neighbor is happy, I'm happy.
Good.
The lady said, yeah.
He said, I know it does have it.
It's the same.
We, we will get you the right plan.
I was just wondering why the, why the parkway went around the back of the, of the opposite one, not in the front, where the parking lot is.
Well, the, the primary entrance to the building is right here, this is what.
Right off the Canton Ave?
No, it's right off the parking lot. This is, the, the front entrance here is going to be ceremonial only, really not part of the organization of the building, the, the way it is today, a lot of the way we've planned on utilizing it. There is an entrance that comes in at this point here, but the elevational difference between the flo, the first floor plate and the parking lot is substantial, hence the reason for all of this ramping systems. And what we're trying to do, again, we're trying to mitigate the visual effect of this in this access path into the, what appears to be the back of the building, which would be totally screened from the neighbors as an existing fence, as well as we're putting in a, a living screen here, uh, to a lot, this walkway, again, its length is in order for us to achieve a one and twenty pitch, and we wouldn't have to have a lot of railings and everything here. Here, we don't have that option, we're at a one and twelve, therefore we're required to have the handrails, and then we're bringing this rampway back around to, to the back here.
Your neighbor noticed, so.
Okay. We try.
Okay, is that your presentation?
Yes, it does.
Uh, does the board have any questions?
Jeff Cookshank, uh, who lives up, up here, had a, had a question, right? He thinks his sewer pipe goes through your parking area.
We, Steve can talk to that a little bit because we've done some exploratory work, but we don't see anything that indicates that that's there.
Yeah, that's true, we've, we've done some excavating there, and we've gone down at least eight feet, and we have not seen it, so if it does run through, it's, it's quite a ways down.
He said he did a dye test.
Right.
And.
He shared that with us.
Took the color off on High Street.
Right. There's nothing that we're going to do that's going to interfere with his drainage as in the way it is right now. As I said, we haven't, you know, excavated the entire site, but we've done it in a few areas, we've not seen anything that indicates that it's there and it's down eight feet, we're not going to do anything that's going to affect it, so.
Might you give him an easement?
You can't give him an easement unless you know where it is.
What we, what we, what we are doing is, is we are, uh, not asphalting, uh, that end of the, uh, property, and we're going to leave that, uh, with, uh, landscaping, uh, so that, uh, there won't, there won't be any, uh, asphalt over it or anything that would likely harm, uh, his system.
I don't see Jeff here tonight, so maybe his non-appearance, he's satisfied, I, I don't know.
I don't know, I haven't, uh, I haven't seen him.
We have discussed it, and obviously his, his primary concern is that nothing be done that would damage it, but since there's no real construction going on below a foot or two at the current grade.
But the fact that it's been there all these years, uh, George, might not, not be like some adverse possession situation.
That's up to lawyers to decide, it sure sounds like it might be, because it's.
There's plenty of them here, I think.
It's probably been there since the house was built, which I think was a little called out.
I'm not going to give an opinion on that, but, uh, we're very pleased that his, uh, system is working and, uh, we hope we'll continue to work in the fo- growing future.
Right now, uh, we're going to, uh, you have a question?
I've got a couple of questions. Um, can you go to A two? Why is the height of the rear roof line greater than the rest of the house? Why is?
It's my office.
Now, that's his honest answer.
It's the boss, so. The, the reality is, is that we were working very closely with the geometries, we wanted to make a twelve and twelve pitch wherever possible, and in order to do that, the way that geometries work out and the pitches, it created this, this height. And then we worked with this height as was recommended by, uh, the abutters, they wanted to break the line. So, it's, it's an aesthetic that we think is appropriate because it, it ends the house and geometrically it works with the elevations as, as, as we've seen.
I guess it's hard for me to understand when the height from the gutter line up to the peak is, is greater that the pitch would be the same. Seems like the pitch would be.
What we did was in each case, we tried, whenever we could, we couldn't do it here, and there's another spot that we couldn't do it in, what we did was we actually bicep to the elevation and then dealt with, we maintained the soft line consistently around the entire house, and then whatever the geometry draw for the roof was, was the way we went.
Is there a rear, do you have a rear elevation of that, that might help?
It's the rear elevation here.
See, now, it looks like it's the same height, but the other one, the other elevation below it again, it's like it's higher, so, I don't know. Okay, um, um, I, the light detector of Scotch lighter, post light that you've got, I, you know, I don't have dimensions on that, but my guess is that you're using that as an entrance post, that the scale of the fixture itself might be all wrong for a pole mount in the parking lot, and I would ask you to maybe work with your landscape architect, because, you know, what you put at eye level entering in is something this big, but when you put it out on the top of the post, it wants to be this big. And I would just double-check that before you have something that looks kind of silly sitting on the top of these tall posts, but that's just something to check. The only other comment I have, if you'd go back to L two. I know that, um, in order to get that arboretum buffer on the back end, no, the other one, just, there you go, um, you're suggesting that you build two less parking spaces than is really required by the program.
That is correct.
I applaud that, and, and I'd like to, to just express an opinion, and I don't know if you can address it or not, um, I don't know where your employees live, or how many, if there's local ones, or how they get to work or whatever, but I would love to, you, you know, have a program of encouraging your employees to use public transportation, et cetera. I'm bothered by how narrow that buffer is, and I would love to see taking one more parking space off the back of that, reducing it by two to put a, a greater buffer in there, the board probably disagrees with me, but it really depends on, you know, as I understand it, this business doesn't have drive-in, stop-in clients or anything, it's really, it's, it's the employees who are parked there.
Yeah, we really don't have foot traffic.
No, there's no foot traffic.
We don't advertise corporate.
Which might help justify to the architectural access board, the railing, the ramp, but I doubt you're going to get that through, but if you don't have walk-in traffic, you know, you might get it by. But i- if it is, you know, employees only, you know, if there is a way to justify making a wider buffer there and reducing those two black spaces, because, I mean, in essence, that was grass that got torn out when this thing started, and the buffer is very narrow with this, so, you know, I'll hear from other board members, but I would, I would support reducing the build program by two with the notion that if there is a need, you know, the board can require you to add those space, two more than what's there.
How many are there? How many are there?
Twenty-four.
I have twenty, twenty-three employees.
Yeah.
And everybody drives one by themselves to the building.
People come from.
So in this day and age, I hope we weren't doing it anymore, but, you know, I don't know, but that's just a suggestion and.
I, I would also say that, uh, any change in the number of spaces has to be approved by the Board of Appeals, and I feel a lot more comfortable going in and saying, we require twenty-six, we plan on putting in twenty-four, as opposed to, uh, going down to a, a twenty-two level from twenty-six.
I certainly support taking two in order to put that buffer, and in fact, if for some reason the Board of Appeals doesn't grant that relief, then I'd want to see a different site plan because, you know, we're not going to go without any buffer and building paving, like in the property line.
Well, we certainly, we certainly urge the Board of Appeals to.
I think the planning board should make those positions known to the Board of Appeals when appropriate.
They always like to communicate with the Board of Appeals.
The only other thing I'd say is there's been an amazing amount of work, this is a tremendous project compared to what was presented, and I applaud the owners, the architects, the whole team, and the neighbors, I, you know, it's incredible time and effort the neighbors put in, both generating drawings and meeting, and, and so as a team, this thing really worked to do something to, to preserve a very important structure, you know, architecturally in, in its exterior appearance for the historic district in the town, and I really applaud your efforts.
Anything else, Ford? Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I was at the site yesterday on behalf of Mr. Cookshank, uh, who's a friend, and I was trying to determine the location of the sewer line, uh, using a divining rod and some other sightings. Uh, it works, most of the time it works.
That's what I sent you this afternoon.
So I, it's my, was my finding, but as I say, it should be proven that the sewer.
Yeah?
That the sewer line is located not on this property, but on Mr. Cookshank's property, and virtually out, out the High Street. The other thing I found out yesterday was that, was that there's a retaining wall along High Street on the entire length of the lot, it's not shown on the site plan here, but I think it should be shown on the site plan.
It's shown.
Not on my plan, not on this plan. High Street.
Here, it's right here.
Well, it's just a, it's a property line, people.
But you see this other line?
Yeah, well, it doesn't show.
Okay, whatever.
Uh, the, the retaining wall is very poor condition, and, um, I'm almost certain that, that on your property, not a town wall, and also the, the street line, as I could determine, comes right up to the base of the wall and there's no sidewalk, in fact, there's al, nothing there.
Grass.
It's nothing, it's dirt.
Oh, they dug up the street and dug up the area all into law.
But I think the wall should be examined by the Milton Engineering Department, or get, at least your engineer to see, uh, if it's going to withstand, uh, over the years, because I think it's in terrible condition, I think it should have attention, and I think that should be part of our, uh, our findings. So, uh, I would urge that, uh, examine the wall and, uh, I would start, I'd start all over with the wall if you, if you could, I think it's gone.
We might hit that pipe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, any other, Ford, comments, questions?
Some of them.
Now, we're going to accept comments and questions from the public, who would like to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve O'Donnell, Chairman of the Milton Historical Commission. I would second Mr. Jackson's comments on the amount of effort that has gone in to this project by all of the parties involved. When I first appeared before the board on behalf of the commission, we were very concerned about the building itself and the retention of as much historic character as possible with the existing building, as well as not making the addition dwarf the existing building. From what I've heard tonight and from what I've heard from the neighbors and some of the others who've been involved in the discussions, I think this is a very good presentation, and the Historic Commission would support it.
Well, good, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Will you move the, the ladder?
Yes, I will, I will also support the, the effort, just move the handicap ramp.
Thank you very much.
Who else?
George Lovely, 29 Canton Avenue, um, one of the abutters and co-chair of the Milton Hill Neighborhood Association. I'm here just to express, and I think I should, for the neighbors, perhaps they will be expressing their own support, but for some who are not here, um, that we applaud the efforts of the contractor, um, and the architect, and.
Even the lawyer.
We've had good communication, they've made a sincere effort to, to accommodate our requests, um, and as everyone else has noted tonight, uh, they've done a good job of, of taking what could have been a real problem for us and have turned it into something that was very hopeful will be, uh, a, a, a positive for the neighborhood rather than a negative. And again, on the issue of things like the ramp, um, we're very hopeful that the Mass Access Board will allow them to, to avoid building it, because I think right now, that's the only real visual problem we have, uh, with the design, but it's frankly. But it's frankly not in the architects or the owner's hands. Aside from that, we also have had discussions about the wall. There are some concerns about the wall, and it's something that I think going forward, we're going to have to pay attention to. And likewise, you know, many still look between the cup and the lip, so we'll have to keep an eye on the project as it progresses to make sure that things stay as promised, but thus far, we're, I certainly for one, very pleased with the process. I want to thank the board for encouraging us and helping us.
Now, have you looked at all these various sheets?
I've seen, I've seen...
Because the question I have is if we were to give a site plan approval, basically saying everything has to be done in accordance with the various sheets and the specifications contained on the sheets, together with, I think that it would be incumbent on us to say that the wall has to be maintained in a safe, presentable condition. But if, if we're relying on these sheets, we need to know if there's anything that's not on them that we need to address. And any, we're not going to have the written decision tonight. And if there is something not on the sheets that should be included in our written decision, we can, we can include it. And actually, that's what the wall, the wall would be part of the written decision. Who else wants to be heard on this application? If anyone?
Not to keep your evening any longer than it is, Indicat Pibidi, I live at 23 Canton Avenue. This is my property here. And when we came to you a month or so ago, I was very depressed. And I have to tell you that I'm just delighted that the system works. Thank you, Planning Board, for your efforts and helping us to get through this, and a special thanks to Rick and his team, because they really have, well, we had some unpleasant times. They came around, and we're very happy to see what we have going on here. We're enthusiastic, and I honestly appreciate their goodwill and the way they've done this, so...
Well, committed neighbors and developers who are willing to, willing to listen and act on what they hear, it's always a pleasure for the Planning Board to have such a situation before.
I imagine, and I'm sure you don't have as many as you'd like.
It doesn't always happen.
Right. So I appreciate your good work.
And shout, "Welcome to Milton."
Who?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one, I suggest that we close the hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I suggest that we prepare a site plan approval along the lines, I suggested I prepare a site plan approval, along the lines of what I suggested, incorporating these sheets and language about the wall and...
How will you deal with the ramp?
The ramp is simply going to be, we are going to urge that the ramp be omitted from the plan, and if it is not omitted, if it is omitted, then we will suggest that... Do you have landscaping, if the ramp is...
That would be the plan, that we would address that area, because there will still be some minor gradient changes, and that will, we will amend that.
Well, I mean, we can, you can either produce a plan that you would want to attach as an alternative, or we're going to have to reopen.
Faster if you attach an alternative.
You may want to do something.
We'll produce a plan.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So let's, let's agree that what I'm outlining is the way we want to proceed. Okay, we're agreed. We're going to, we're going to...
I've got this to 28.
Yeah, 28. So thanks for, the hearing is over, Phil, we're going to...
Can you just send, send a copy of the revised landscape sign?
Okay, I will.
I'll just, because we just got one today, but it wasn't the same, so this is new?
386 Highland Avenue, let's hear from the applicant about this scenic wall open. All right, Mr. Sheffield, is this your, your, your...
No.
386 Highland Street.
Hi.
Hi. You have, do we have a plan of this?
Yes.
There it is. Okay, tell us what you want to do and why.
Sure. Brian DiLasi, resident of Milton, and...
What was your last name, sir?
D I B L A S I.
Thank you.
And we're purchasing and renovating 386 Highland Street. We'll be putting on, in addition to the side of the house, that includes a garage. The, yeah. And we're looking to put a drive onto Highland Street. Currently, there is a garage and a driveway on Reed Street. So we're looking to alter the stone wall.
Eighteen feet is the usual maximum. Eighteen feet is the usual maximum.
Okay.
And you say 20 feet?
Then 18 is?
So I would...
That was, that was very fast. It was probably the fastest agreement we've had all night.
Out of that latest one we did, I thought it was more like 16. Do you remember what we approved?
Well, 18 is the maximum.
Okay.
But you want a, you want a wide driveway so you can park all kinds of cars in there. Is that right?
Well, just, yeah, just a, just a turning radius, I should pull it in, just...
I mean, it is a fairly tight, a tight turn that they have.
It would be, yes.
But 18 feet is...
Acceptable.
Acceptable, unless, unless the board feels that we need to do something different.
I mean, you could always do, if the board felt it was necessary, you could do 16 and then widen the driveway out as it comes out. Are you going to curve the wall? It looks like from your plan, you're going to curve the wall in?
Yes, we went up and down Highland Street, and that seemed to be the typical detail that people curved it into the driveway, so we just wanted to stay with the neighborhood.
But I think that 18 feet is good for fire engines also.
Very important, ambulances.
Mr. Chairman, I was there yesterday.
I know.
And I saw the wall, there are two distinct types of wall that went along the sideline there. One is just so-so, the other one is very nice.
Yeah.
Which one is being, so-so, what is the very nice part?
At that point right there, I'd classify that as the more, the nicer part.
The nicer part? Thank you.
Okay. Pete? What do you say?
Well, where you're taking the old driveway out and the old garage and things, there's stone along there, it's not as nice a wall, and I'd like to see that closed up, and they'll put stone and close that up again, so that...
Yes. You better close up where?
On Reed Street, there's a driveway. It doesn't show on here, but where they're taking the garage down, and, you know, we might as well get stones back there to kind of permanently close that off. Of course, you'll be taking out all the asphalt or gravel or what's there. Is, at that section, is Highland Street one-way going down to...
It is, yes.
So that means every time, if you leave the driveway and you're going to Town Hall, you've got to go down and around the, around the loop?
Yes, I left out the driveway.
You know, the one thing I think of is the, you know, you know that people are going to come out this driveway and shoot up Highland Avenue, and there's a curve that comes around there.
They're going to come up their driveway and shoot up Highland Avenue?
They're going to come out and, and turn toward Town Hall, as opposed to...
Highland Avenue and need them.
Highland Street. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've only lived here 24 years, it's going to take a while for me to learn all this.
I'll agree with you.
But, so I do, you know, my first thought was, are we creating a nuisance, you know, with the traffic coming around the corner and somebody trying to shoot up and, you know, is there a problem there? And then I also thought of, if it's only a new driveway opening kind of for convenience, you know, are we kind of nipping away at our historic stone walls? But, I don't know. All that being said...
That being said, 18 feet will...
18 feet's all right.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
There's four houses on the other side of the street that all have to deal with that same one-way street.
Yep.
Okay, I think we can...
Would you allow for one?
With the fixing the, fixing the existing wall is...
Reed Street, yeah.
This will be good. 18 feet, is the board agreeable?
Yep.
Yes.
Can I ask the applicant a question? Who would you buy the house from?
The Flavins.
He was a great historian at the time.
You want to be authorized to sign the letter?
No, I want, I'll do that too, but I actually have, two people have called me on this project.
Yeah.
Mrs. Bell from 31 Reed Street and Mr. and Mrs. Durin from 21 Reed Street.
Yeah.
Both of those couples, the new project would make the house beautiful, remove the L on the back, tear down the old garage. They're in full support of the project.
Okay, so Mr. Clark can send out the letter. Mr. Clark, we want the existing driveway closed. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was talking to another neighbor, and he thought that the ownership had been transferred, is that correct?
That is correct, that it has not been transferred.
This is subject to ownership, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we have the property's generally in agreement.
Exactly. Don't tear the wall down until you, you... Okay, now, Mr. Clark, once they have title, they can, they can put an 18-foot opening with the curving in using existing stones and using other existing stones, fill in the existing driveway, and...
Is Reed Street a scenic road? No?
Yes. So, do we have a motion to authorize Mr. Clark to issue this approval?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. 310 Granite Avenue, Milton Gas. Milton Gas. Canopy and pumps. Tell us... Tell us about the...
Good evening. I'm Attorney General Sheffield, and I represent Robbie, the owner of Milton Gas. In 19, in 2007, we were before you for a site plan review. We want to make a minor modification to that. Specifically, at that time, we were talking about putting in an underground storage tank. That has been approved, and we are in the process of putting that out for bid to have it go in. It's been approved by the, by the Board of Selectmen. It's been approved by the Fire Safety Lieutenant, and what we are here for is to seek approval for a slightly altered canopy that will contain the fire suppression equipment necessary for self-serve. And also, when we came before you last time in 2007, we were talking about having three tanks, now we're talking about having four. So there'd be an additional tank.
What?
Pump, pump.
Right.
I'm sorry, pump. The reason for that is that the gas station is so successful now, it sometimes has lines backing up. This will allow more cars to be serviced at the same time that there'll be separated pumps, and you'll be able to have more vehicles serviced at one time. It will be more efficient, it will be better for the operating public, it will be better for the neighbors, it will be better for the gas station with improved efficiency. In the plan, we're also...
Let me just, I hate to interrupt, but this is an amended site plan approval hearing that we're conducting.
That is correct.
On the application regarding premises at 310 Granite Avenue. So this is a public hearing, and continue.
And one thing that we have also noticed is coming in from Boston, there is no signage really welcoming people to Milton. So at the corner of Wood Street and Granite Avenue, we plan to have a rock put in place that has "Welcome to East Milton Square," since this is the beginning of East Milton Square. And that will be a nice, I think, addition to the town and to the gas station. We provided pictures to everyone of what is...
I didn't get one.
You didn't?
I got my gas there.
We got one for you. Consider that to be a pump.
Well, he's not getting a monetary benefit out of purchasing the gas.
Okay, so basically, you want to add a pump and...
Change the canopy.
Change the canopy, right?
That's correct.
Who wants to be heard on this particular application?
My name is Alfred D. Thomas, I live at 326 Granite Avenue, and I own and operate a funeral home next adjacent to the property. I come here to speak in favor of this application. I reflect back before the applicant applied, took the, took over the station, and recall the condition of the previous owners, and many of you, I'm sure, are aware, it was just like an old-fashioned, old gas, gas, gas station. It had needed repairs, it needed painting. The Exxon people owned it, and they wouldn't allow those that leased it to, to do any many renovations to it. However, when the applicant took it over, he took it over with pride in the property as well as the operation of the property. He, he spent a lot of time and money to renovate it, to decorate it, to, to make the accessibility better. He took down an old fence, for instance, and instead of replacing it with the fence, he planted almost 50 arborvitae plants to make it as aesthetic as possible. He's been a good neighbor, he's been a good neighbor to me, and he's been a good neighbor to the people in the neighborhood. I've talked to several people, and they've told me how, how well he was, and how kind he was, and helpful to them in a time of need. So I humbly request the, the board here to grant this application. So, I humbly request the, the board here to grant this application. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard? Hearing, no takers, let's, uh, consider-
Is this in the-
I think the stone is, uh-
Take a check of it.
Is the stone part of, uh, of the application?
The welcoming.
Sure. Okay, fine.
I would say for the record, um, and particularly if a decision is to be written up, uh, that the canopy will be forty-six point seven feet by thirty-six.
Well, you're going to write a draft decision and get it today.
Uh, fine.
Okay, um, yes.
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. No wording on the canopy, no?
Yeah, well, as shown in the picture, we'll say-
I don't have the picture before me. No, no, on the canopy, we don't want any wording on the bend, it's like you're spaced up above.
You don't, you don't want?
Yeah.
Well, show them what we've got, right? No, it's not there. Well, I mean, that's up to the, isn't that up to the sign?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have precedent for this, according to, uh, Bassett Street, Granite Avenue, there's a gas station and that was written into the, uh, our, uh, permit, it would be those signs on the canopy itself.
Well, we have kind of signs on the current canopy.
Well, maybe you can take them off.
And, uh, the, the plan would be to identify, uh, we have the gas station two doors down and there's a certain amount of confusion between the two gas stations and having the identity here, we think would be helpful to the public.
Well, the one on the corner of Bassett and Granite, specifically stated that the new canopy would not contain any advertising and it looks clean. Lately, a canopy has gone up around the windows there, which were not authorized and, uh, words on the canopy itself identifying food inside the building, which perhaps that canopy may be coming down. But, I'm just saying, on the new canopy at the, this station we're talking about, I'm suggesting not any writing on the canopy and then it would match the one of above.
Well, could I suggest that, uh, there'll be no writing on the canopy unless it's approved by the, uh, the sign review committee and, uh, if necessary, approved by the Board of Selectmen for who is in charge of signing it.
I will, well, we can write those permits, draw permits also, but I will defer to you on that one, Mr. Ch-
Well, that seems, that seems reasonable, leave it to the sign review committee.
And also, Mr. Sheffield, uh, what are the hours of the station, operating hours? From six to ten, some days from seven to nine. So, is it the, uh, intent here to make the entire pumping areas self-service? No. No. It is not all self-service, half of it will be self-service, the public needs a full service. How about the diesel? Excuse me? Diesel. It's a diesel pump, yeah. Will that be self-service? Will be one section self-service and one section it's a full service. Of the diesel? Yes. So, there's both, there's both, there's self-service and there's- One side is self-service and one side is full service, so gas and diesel. What kind of vehicles use diesel?
Mercedes.
There's a lot of cars.
Mercedes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking, I'm asking this applicant, not Mr. Lynch. What kind of vehicles use diesel? Um, there's a lot of cars use diesel. We have, I'm an alley-oop technician on Mercedes. How about trucks? Trucks use- I work on Mercedes and BMW. Do trucks use diesel? Sure, some trucks use diesel. What kind of trucks? All kinds. Garbage trucks? Rubbish trucks? We have diesel trucks, but mostly it's a car truck, they go to this place, a lot of places, they go to a big facility. Let me ask you this, is it possible that a driver of a diesel truck would come here at ten o'clock at night to the station, pump his own diesel, self-service and drive off? That's, that's part of the new scenario, correct?
Well, the station closes at ten, he couldn't do it at ten, but he might do it at quarter off, sure.
Yeah, quarter off, thank you. We have Volvo cars and a VW and all kind of cars that can- Well, I'd, I'd go for, uh- It's already been less than the hours at night, all week one to nine o'clock at night, all week one.
I don't think that's, that's part of site plan approval.
You don't think so?
No.
The diesel pump, I mean, the diesel tank, it's already been approved.
No, I understand that, it just seems to me that the hours of operation, for a special permit, we would have the authority to do it, but on site plan approval, I don't think we have that.
Okay, I'll grant you that, Mr. Chairman, okay. Uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Sheffield.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, one more, uh, final question.
Fine.
Do you own the, do you own the premises, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you own any other stations at Milton?
No.
Does your family?
Excuse me?
Does your family?
No.
You're not relation, related to Jason?
Thank you.
I'm a good competition manager.
Thank you, okay, thanks.
Okay, yes.
I'm a bit concerned about this proposal because I think the property and the dimensions are really too tight to fit two bays of, of diesel like that. The space between the pump and the building is such that if somebody's pulled up the pump, somebody can't drive around. I think when we reviewed the, uh, going to three pumps, you know, part of the issue and the reason the three pumps were shown is that there really is too tight a space to get, you know, this new location and, and, you know, what, what do we lose with the new proposal? Um, we lose a couple of parking spaces, which we had gone over quite a bit and we're going down from thirteen parking spaces to eleven parking spaces. Um, when we, when the last addition was, was suggested, if you count what's on the plan, it loses two parking spaces. When we approved this last, this addition here, one of the, uh, benefits we've got, we got was some increased planting area, you know, to try to soften this a little bit and now that goes away under this, this revised proposal. Um, and, in fact, the, the drawing that's submitted for approval, you know, the, the illustrative plan shows this green space in this rock, but the drawing that they submitted doesn't have any, any planting. Um, there's supposed to be, the old plan that we proposed had a planting area, um, between the sidewalk and the pumps, again, to try to soften it a little bit and that's no longer part of the proposal.
Well, it has to be, because all they're, all they're talking about is changing the number of pumps in the canopy.
But it's not on the plan.
I'm sorry, the purpose of this, uh, plan, uh, that is before you is to show the location of the underground storage tank and where the fuel pumps will be. Um, currently, there is, uh, in, in addition to the, uh, uh, with all the cars coming into the pump, it'll also go between the gas station and, uh, and the pump, so, uh-
Pretty darn tight.
And you will not be doing that, uh, at, at this point. Current sign pla- current, uh, site plan, um, specifies a certain number of parking spaces and we're not talking about altering the number of parking spaces at all. We're talking merely about the, uh, the erection of the, uh, fourth pump, uh, we already have approval for three, and the, uh, overhead canopy. Uh, that, that's all, there's no intent to make any other changes, uh-
The plan that we're approving doesn't show those amenities which we approved last time. I appreciate what Mr. Thomas said about, you know, how you've taken pride in this and made it a lot nicer and invested in it and, and I do appreciate that and I, and, you know, I applaud those efforts and, you know, I'm sure that you'll take pride in the new development too. I just, you know, I don't see that cars can efficiently circulate around two rows of pumps. I see a plan that reduces the amount of parking, I see a plan that moves the canopy, um, a larger canopy and moves it, you know, thirty feet closer to the street, which I, you know, so I just, the, I think it hurts the aesthetics of the area, um, without the plantings that were approved and things like that. And from a business point of view, I understand what he's trying to do, I, I just don't, I don't think that the site is big enough to accommodate, uh, this new proposal.
Well, we need to look at the original plan to see whether or not your, the bigger canopy is impinging on any planting.
Uh, no, the, uh, the, uh, there is no impingement whatsoever, what we talked about was to have plantings at the corner of Wood Road and, uh, and, uh, Granite Avenue, uh, have plantings, uh, going down Wood Road and having, uh, plantings going, uh, behind the gas station, uh, to the, uh, beside the Alfred D. Thomas-
And between, and between the canopy and the sidewalk. There's a planting strip, it shows right on the plan here and, and-
Well, what, can we, can we, you know, can we get the original plan and make sure that this thing is, uh, you've got the original plan?
This is the original plan.
And there are differences?
There are differences.
Okay, the differences have to, have to be resolved, we're going to want a little more, uh, specification of what you're going to do with that rock.
Uh, the, the, the plantings are shown on the-
Right, but that's not part of the site plan approval.
Yes, it is. This was being presented to, to you.
I think we need a site plan that shows what they're committed to in terms of planting areas. Um, I, I don't know what the standards are for movement around pumps and things, but I, I don't-
Well, maybe we could, maybe you could, you could get us a little information that this is not, this is, this is okay.
Fully compliant with-
This is okay as far as standards are concerned, whatever the standards are, and if there are no standards of, uh, that it, it complies with good practices. Something to allay the, uh, concern that this may, uh, you may be putting too much into too little space. Uh, you might want to also have an elevation of what it's going to look like as you're coming down the street, uh, because it is going to be sort of right on top of the sidewalk, the canopy is.
This is what it's been proven to be. Can, this is all of it.
That's the old one.
This is all of it.
Yeah.
This is the norm.
I understand, but coming down the street is this way. In other words, coming from East Milton Square, what is it going to look like? Is it going to, I mean, I want to go and look and see what it's going to look like myself.
God, we can meet there, probably before the meeting.
Well, we can, yeah. Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Sheffield, who was the applicant in 2007, was it this gentleman?
Yes, it was.
It seems to be a weird, different, a different person, was, I'd be usual?
No, he's just aged considerably. He's not.
Okay, uh, what we're going to do here, what we're going to do here is because there are outstanding questions, uh, we're going to continue this, uh, till the twenty-eighth, when Bill. And we're going to, uh, you're going to offer the people a site visit, although I'm going to just drive down Granite Avenue and, and see if I can visualize this thing. Um, and see whether or not, see whether or not it will, uh, impact the majesty of the avenue.
Instead of, um, the twenty-eighth, would you like to, uh, do a site visit, um, Saturday morning or-
Well, we're not doing the site visit on the twenty-eighth, we're continuing the hearing till the twenty-eighth.
Right, but I mean, instead of continuing the hearing till the twenty-eighth, would you, uh, like to, uh, have a site visit and then you can vote on-site, um, with, uh, all the-
I don't want to have another meeting, I don't want to go, I don't want to have a meeting on Saturday morning.
Okay.
Also, I generally prefer not to vote on-site because it means that fewer people get a chance to hear the deliberations.
Yeah, I would also point out that I believe something like thirty-two registered letters went out, um, to, uh, the entire neighborhood. Um, and a certified letter is, uh, much more intimidating than even, uh, a first-class letter. And, uh, the selectman noted and was surprised by the fact that there was not one single neighbor objecting, um, probably because of the way that he's been conducting his business. I think that says a lot for him.
I, I think that what we're talking about though is the canopy close to the street, what it's going to look like and the fact that we want to make sure that, uh, you've got enough room to do what you want to do, um, under applicable standards and, uh, that's not to say that, uh, uh, I mean, I personally, if it's, uh, going to be attractive and if it's, uh, as far as coming down the street is concerned, uh, and if the pumps will fit, I'm, I'm for it. Uh, so, uh-
Excellent.
We, we think that you're doing a, a nice job, we just want to make sure that, uh, you don't, uh, have, uh, all the traffic doesn't get stuck around your pumps.
The, the long dimension of, of your canopy from the street going to the building, it's forty-eight, seven, can that be reduced at all or is that some standard?
It's a center size for two iron, for the two iron pump, it's a center size to cover. We could shorten it a little bit, yes, if we wanted-
Because when you look down the street, it'd be nice if it wasn't right at the back of sidewalk, if it was back a little bit and it looks like there's-
Originally, it's a twenty-four, uh, one iron, it's a twenty-four feet, this is, it's going to be forty, uh, forty-six.
Yeah, for the, for the two, when you had just one set of pumps, we approved a twenty-two foot island.
We could shorten it another, uh, two feet from each side.
Yeah, two feet on each side.
You've seen how much you can shorten it because it would be better.
If it was just that-
If it were a little less close to the street.
Okay, okay, we will, we will look into that and have all the information for you.
Fine, on the twenty-eighth.
What time? Yes, yes. We have two different gas stations.
At, uh, seven, seven-
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Seven fifteen. You're not going to be able to do-
I understand that, I unders- I was going to say seven-thirty, but seven-fifteen, okay. Continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six-eighty-three to six-eighty-five, I should have announced this, uh, earlier. Are you continuing? The Brushhill Road, six-eighty-three, six-eighty-five Brushhill Road subdivision, continued hearing, has been, uh, on request of the applicant, continued to April twenty-eighth. At what time, Bill? At what time, Bill?
I don't think I heard you. The six-eighty-three Brushhill Road bill?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty?
We're doing, no, seven-forty-five.
How long do you think this one's going to take?
Okay, uh, seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty's good.
Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty, okay. One-thirty-one Elliott Street, continued hearing. Now, when we were last here, we had a presentation from the applicant and you can, uh, you can do another presentation and then, before the board chimes in, we're going to, we're going to ask for public comment on the, uh, application and then, uh, the board can, uh, offer its own comments.
Chime in.
They can chime in after the public. So, initially, we will, uh, and turn that so that the people in the audience can see it, please. But, uh, but also, a little bit so we can see it too.
Audio technology.
I just, you will do.
Screens, we need screens down here.
All right, introduce yourself and, uh, we will, you have the floor.
Okay. I'm Warren Daniel of Daniel Architects. Um, we were here, as you noted, uh, last meeting and, uh, presented this revised scheme, which, uh, reduces the size of the building and the number of units.
Excuse me, Mr. Daniel, I guess I should, uh, say that this is a public hearing on an application for a special permit and site plan approval regarding premises at one-thirty-one Elliott Street, so, continue.
Uh, so, would you like me to go through the, uh-
Yeah.
New scheme or?
Yeah, go through the scheme.
Okay. Um, I don't know if everybody can see this, um, but what we've done with this scheme is essentially reduce the back end of the building by eighteen feet, uh, on four levels, um, create two levels of parking, uh, the ground floor level here and the first floor level, um, or I'm backwards, I think, this is the ground floor, uh, first floor. First floor is accessed, uh, from the, um, west end and the, uh, ground floor from the east end of the site. The yellow represents business area, business use, uh, which is primarily on the ground floor level. area, business use, which is primarily on the ground floor level, roughly 5,000-plus feet. And the yellow here likewise represents business use, and the green is residential use. And then the second and third floor have identical plans, and they're, of course, in green here with the terracotta being the circulation space. And then, so that's the second and third floor. The fourth floor drops off this wing, which is the same as what we previously done, and maintains this four-story level piece here. So this is three stories, this is four stories. And then we sketched a site plan that indicates this reduction in size. Again, just to back up a little bit, this is going for the 1.5 FAR versus the 1.725, which we originally had submitted for. And then, so again, the site plan, this is the original, earlier site plan for comparison, and then this is the new site plan. And the only essential difference is, again, that this back, I call it the back of the building, 18 feet in length has been chopped off and reduced. And the parking has been moved in 20 feet off the adjacent lot and the street, which is a residential requirement. This back piece is residential, he's owned. The front is business-owned. And then these sketches indicate a couple of new ideas, this one being the corner of Elliott and, and Central. And the change is to raise this tower and steepen the roof to give the tower a little bit more prominence than we had before. We raised it about four feet over what it was before. It was about, the eve line was about at this level, so it's come up a little bit. And then, on the side opposite, which is right here, right at the bridge on Central Ave, right coming into Milton, we've created a, another 45-degree bay, a little different, a little smaller than this one, and created a similar roof on it, if you can see that. On the floor plans, it's indicated, if you can see it. It's a little bit small here, right here, and right here. So that's a, a gesture to give that corner more prominence and, and create a, a kind of gateway to, to Milton. And that had been expressed by the committee previously as a, an interest. I think it's a good idea. It gives this a little more character than it had before. Before, it was a similar bay to all of the rest of them here. This is the same-sized bay. It'll be likewise a living room, but it's 45 degrees, giving you a little bit bigger space, a little bit more presence. So, that's the, that is a rundown of what we're doing. Do you want me to go through the square footage, or?
No, this is a, we have a concept plan. This is not a, we, we didn't want the application to have to be done in the detail that's necessary, because the concept plan is good enough to get some, get some feeling as to what people think of it. So we're going to start by hearing from the public. And who wants to be heard? Yes. Mr. Daniel, take your big available, but.
Thanks. My name's Bob Hiss, I live at 273 Adams Street here in Milton. And I wrote out some thoughts, just thinking about the project.
Explain your last name, please, sir.
H.I.S.S.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight in support of expediting the special permit for the development at 131 Elliott Street as quickly as possible. The planning for this site has been exhaustive, and it's, I believe it's time to move forward. The Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee has studied the area extensively and planned the project in detail for many years. The committee's worked directly with the individual architects and met with the architect for 131 Elliott, I think at least four times. If I get some history, the planning for this started in 2003, when the owner submitted a plan of the town for residential development. But at that time, according to the Urban Land Institute 2003 Technical Assistance Program report, the town wanted a strictly commercial development with an element of retail space. So later in '05, the ULI, the report, shows that the town decided on a smart growth, mixed-use development of the Central Avenue Business District. And after years more work, the planning board, the committee, the ULI, and other stakeholders finalized the planned unit development overlay zone for these properties, and the '07 town meeting approved. So we're four years into the process at this point. So it appears to me that the owners of 36 Central Ave, 93-95 Elliott, 131 Elliott, have been very patient and cooperative, and while others decided what was going to be erected on the property, where they're going to, while they're paying the taxes, the liability insurance, and all the other expenses, and they're taking all the risk for the development. The 131 Elliott Street plan was then further delayed by this fractional ownership issue, which the town owns while the MBT controlled a small parcel of land next to the truck tracks. So the selectman reached an agreement with a Tegan, issued an RFP to sell the land to the highest bidder, hoping it was Mr. Conley, but he was the only respondent. The selectman didn't immediately accept. So further negotiations did lead to an agreement. And I think that was around '09 or so, so we're still more years into it. So I, I think the owners of the property should be commended for enduring an eight-year process, because alternatives available to them would have been easier, certainly more profitable. And yet, it appears, as I've been watching what's gone on on TV and the press, they've been anything but commended as they, as they go through this process. And I think any further delay would, would be inappropriate and disrespectful of all the countless hours of work done by a lot of people, including the Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, who planned a nice-looking building for 131 Elliott. Now, we all know that 40B laws allow developers to bypass local zoning regulations, and they should a developer want to do so, as many do, you know, avail themselves of that 40B option. They would be before the Board of Appeals instead of a board, before the planning board. And so the planning board would lose that oversight capability that we all like it to have. And a 40DB development, I think, in the site would be terrible for the town and for the Central Avenue Business District. I think it would, the building would look the way the developer wants, rather than the way, you know, the process that we've been following. And I think the density would be wrong if it were to go that way. Yet, the developers never made that kind of threat to their Milton residents. I think they want what's best for the town. They're invested here, they've raised their families here, and I think Mr. Conley's been pretty patient. So I hope that you, our planning board, will expedite this thing and benefit the town of Milton, the neighborhood, the business district, by expediting this quickly and put a good plan in place that I think has been pretty well-planned by well-qualified and diligent diligent people. So, thanks for your attention.
Okay, who else would like to hear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Zickwitz, I'm the co-chair of Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee. We have been working with the developer and his team for a while now. I've put a lot of time in with him, and he, they've been very responsive to us as to our suggestions. The plans that are up here tonight, we haven't seen them yet, but they seem to, without really studying them closely, they seem to keep to the spirit of the last plan we saw. It is 18 feet shorter, which I think improves.
Okay.
Step up there for a second.
One of the things we're concerned about with the original, the original plan, I'll for lack of a better term, I'll call it the Tom and Graff plan. It came out a lot closer to the neighbors here, and it also came out a lot closer to the neighbors on Elliott Street. There was parking underneath, so it was a combination of hardscape surfaces with some plantings that were going to be implanted. This new plan, everything got pushed away from the neighbors adjacent here and also from the neighbors across the street, so they were able to create this green space, which I think is, is much, is much more beneficial than the old Tom and Graff plan. The other thing we looked at with the developer was aligning this space with the wine shop across the street. So you kind of have an edge to where that business area ends, and then the main mass of the building steps back as you hit the residential. So it starts to open up as you come up here on Elliott Street, as you come down to Central Avenue, it starts to tighten up again as you come to the business district. So we, we felt that was very important to keep the mass away from the neighbors here and away from the neighbors here. We know it then tends to increase the mass along Central Avenue. And one drawing that we did request that we have yet to see is a comparison of the height that's there now with what the proposed height will be along this new building. Because I think, I think most people in town seem to be used that height, whether it's the right thing to continue or not. And so you guys will decide, but it'd be nice to know the comparative height of what's there now, as to what's here now. But I think it's more important to keep it away from the neighbors and push, push it up more towards the business community, even though around there are all one-story buildings. I think it works better to keep it away from the residents. That's what we've been talking about on, on the, on the committee. We are happy that they agree to bring the tower element back that was the original concept back on the ULI workshop that was done. We feel it's an important element. As you come into that business area, you'll see it from Central Avenue, you'll see it coming up Elliott. We feel it'll become a real focal point. I think it's gotten better since we've seen it. Looks like it's got defined a little more. So we've been very pleased with the, with the process with them, the response that they've given to us, and we think it's a, it's a good project.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Who else?
Janet Irwin, 120 Highland Street. I have so many things I would like to discuss with this board, but I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I'm, I've been very, very upset with the way this board has treated a citizen of this town. And I think that he has been vilified and excoriated by a few people here on the board. I read in the newspaper that the Dorchester developer, as though he has no ties to Milton, who grew up, who grew up in Milton, whose family, I don't know him, by the way. I don't know him from a whole new wall. This was such a beat-up factor, and we do have an anti-bullying policy up at the schools, and I'm tempted to bring it down here. And we're supposed to be in no place for hate town, and I haven't seen anything but for this man. And I was so offended by how awful it got, that I started to look things up. And I, I was acquainted with his wife and my children at St. Augustine's, so I want to be completely honest that I know his wife in passing. We don't have a relationship. There is nothing in this for me. But you can hear from my voice how upsetting this is. I mean, very upsetting. We should not be treating people who are taking such an enormous risk like this. This is our planning board. We plan. We've had the Central Ave Revitalization Committee. I think that we have a good group of people, a good cross group of people, who have worked for years planning a building and planning for that entire area, along with two different urban land institute committees, other stakeholders. A lot of people have had a lot to say. And he comes in and I hear, "You made a big mistake not coming to us first." I don't think that's nice. I don't think it's nice to not say anything about a tree for years and then try to say, "Well, now you need to change the whole building because you need to change the tree." I grew up here. I grew up on Brookside Park. I went to that Little Hendry's restaurant for lunch. It wasn't any fancy fabulous place. No offense to the White Brothers or to anybody in the family. It was not some incredibly enchanting place. It was a bit of a dump, to be honest. There were stools and sandwiches. I mean, if you remember Clover Drug, while they, they were the last to let go at the little sandwich bar, it wasn't something that anybody would want to keep. It's not, I think we have a beautiful building. We have a person who's willing to take all of the financial risk. He has been trying to do something with this property that I can see from just my own investigation, back to 2003, when he submitted a plan to the town to do a residential development. And the town at that time wanted only commercial and with a little bit of retail. And he was held up, and then we had another ULI committee commit and say, "We're going to do a smart growth, mixed growth, mixed use development that was better for the area." I'm all in favor of doing something that's the most beautiful thing that can be done for the area. It has looked like a mess for a long time, but it's not his fault that it's looked like a mess. He's tried. That, and I don't think he should be beaten up for it. And I think that a lot of members on this board know a lot more facts, and to let him sit here and get beat up by person after person, that's not what this town is about. And I really think that we need to do a better job protecting our own citizens, and especially somebody who's willing to do all the work and spend all the money and take all the risk. I don't think anybody takes a tree down and loses a 15% bonus on a building like this and makes that decision lightly. I don't know anything about trees. And I'm not, I, I'm sorry it's gone. I have a tree older than that on my property. And Mr. Lynch knows, my tree was attacked by those crazy landscapers that are hired by Nine X or N-Star, who come down the street, and they were on my lawn, between my house and the tree with a chainsaw and, and hat. I mean, it was really terrifying how, and, but we've had trees taken down. Turner's Pond, nobody cared anything about. A beautiful weeping willow that was there since I was, at least since I was a child. And that was a long time ago. We can go back to Preston's Market in Milton Village. A gigantic silver maple at Glover School. It had to have been at least 100 years old. Both of these trees were within the pond, within the 200 feet of the pond, within pine tree book. Nobody cared. People complained, but nobody cared. We didn't get this unbelievable crew of people all wound up attacking one citizen who's trying to do a good thing. I was at the, at the Conservation Commission meeting Tuesday night, and I'll wrap it up, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go on forever. And Twig, the tree advocate, came. And he came for Mr. Conley. And it was a tremendous relief to see, since there's three reports that say this tree was dangerous and needed to come down. And I'm very appreciative of Mr. Duffy's remark that he didn't want to be standing under it in strong wind. The tree, I never heard anybody ask why the tree started dying after 200 years. It's just got to be his fault, and we've got to yell at him and blame him and make a villain out of him. Why did the tree start dying after 200 years? A perfectly healthy tree. Was it the sidewalk project, when they tore up everything down there and put that god-awful looking stupid strip in with the brick zigzag? And the brick crosswalks that are slippery in all weather except dry? And that, I wish somebody would fix that while they're down there fixing everything else. The paint is all worn off, you can't see pedestrians in them. I think there's a lot wrong down there, but this plan is not one of them. This should go forward. And I wish that we could treat our residents with a little bit more respect and a little bit more dignity, and protect them when we kind of get these things going and lots of people want to pile on and be very critical. I mean, he can't defend himself. He's going to sit here and take it. And I don't think it's fair. So I hope that we can do the right thing, move this forward. I think we've had a tremendous amount of study time on it, and I appreciate you doing your jobs and protecting the entire area for the benefit of all, but I just would like to see, Janet. Everything elevated a little bit.
Janet, you went to the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
I wasn't there. And you mentioned Twig?
Yes. He came to say that he thought it would have been nice if the town had stepped up, taken an easement on the property to alleviate Mr. Conley of the liability issues, if they wanted to save the town. I don't believe for a second that the town of Milton would have taken it on. I think that when they looked at how real this liability was, I Googled "child death, falling limb." 14.5 seconds, I got 16,700 results. I was flabbergasted. But there's trees falling down, there's limbs. And I'm not talking about hurricanes or storms or anything else, just limbs falling. There was a six-month-old baby that was killed in Central Park, posing with mother under a tree, and the limb just fell, and the baby's dead, and the mother was severely brain-in. I mean, it's just, this stuff happens all the time. Limbs fall. So when you have a tree that you know is compromised, how can he live with himself? Right?
Just a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Did Twig change his opinion of the tree?
Well, I, to me, he didn't, because I never heard him say that the tree could be saved when he was at the planning board. I heard him talk about, I heard him say that he really wanted to try, that he thought that there should have been an effort to try to save it, but I never heard him say that he could save it. that he could save it. He said that he really, I mean, I did, I did hear that he recognized the liability in this issue and that he's a tree advocate and he's not just an arborist. And he explained that his reputation is well-known throughout the country, that if you want a tree saved, you call him, because that's what he does. He tries to save trees. He tries very, very hard to save trees. And he was, he was eloquent. I thought he was very honest. He did say that he didn't see the infestation of the termites. He didn't, and he said he didn't see the rot because he didn't have a drill bit that went deep enough into the tree to be able to make that diagnosis. But I really, you know, I mean, there's got to be more to it than just the termites. How do the termites start coming in? And I really would like a diagnosis from somebody to say, "How, how did a healthy, disease-free tree all of a sudden start to die?" And I'm wondering if the roots were cut when they put this, I mean, and maybe we can hold whoever put the sidewalk in, I'm sorry whoever you were if you did it, but it would be nice to have a definitive answer instead of holding a property owner who's carrying this property all his time and like to do something and can't, and then gets beaten up at the end of it. I, I just, I really think the process has been very unfair, and I just would like to see everything elevated a little bit and a little bit more friendly and a little more helpful to getting this thing done, because I think that that area has looked awful long enough and we're getting close. I would like to see the people, I think the people at 36 Central Avenue have been beaten up. And I think, you know, when you see that their commercial aspect of their building is already under agreement, we are so lucky in this economy. People want to come, they want to be in these buildings. Let's get them there. And let's get, you know, what, $400,000 for that postage stamp of land the town gets immediately as soon as this thing is approved? You can buy, it's worthless land. They can't, it's doing nobody any good. The town needs the money. And then what, $100,000 in permitting fees? I mean, it's just a wild guess. I have, I have no idea.
Thank you for answering the question. I just want to make it clear that from time to time, I do work for the Conleys. I do inspection work. I check with the, you didn't know that?
No, no, I didn't know that, but I don't, I-
First meeting, I announced that. I checked with the, with the, I can't even think of the-
Town council.
Well, town council. Then they referred me to the Ethics Committee. I told the Ethics Committee of my relationship with the Conleys. And I said, "I really would like to participate in the hearings, but I know my first responsibility is to the town. I've been elected about four or five times out of the Planning Board." They told me to write a letter, which I did. The town clerk has a copy of the letter. I kind of paraphrase the letter the first meeting with that, so that, but still, the reason I asked you this question is because I've been hearing all these rumors around, and I didn't go to the Conservation Commission, and I have not been in touch with Mr. Conley.
I was as surprised as anyone to see him there. I was, I was actually there on another matter to support another matter, and this happened to come up while I was there, and it came up before, so I was waiting to see it. And I was very pleased that he made a very honest and sincere attempt to explain what he was doing, why he was doing it. And I think he made it very clear that the tree was not going to be saved. I, I mean, he just would not make that statement, that the tree could be saved. I know that he wanted to try, but the infrastructure wasn't there to support those limbs. I mean, I, but I don't, I, I don't want to paraphrase anything he said. What he said exactly was, he is a tree advocate, he's not a typical arborist, it's his job to try and save trees, and he thought that the town should, it was too bad that the town didn't, didn't do something to alleviate Mr. Conley of the liability. Because I know myself, I mean, we've had, we've, we've got property, and the insurance companies come by unannounced and call you and tell you, "Get that tree off the property now." We've, very recently, just had the exact same thing happen. There's a crack in the, in the pavement. It's, it's a different world with insurance companies. The big insurers just, they're not going to provide the coverage because they know something's going to happen, so.
Did Twig mention, because I heard this from someone else, but I haven't been able to face him and get the information, did he ever mention the word that the tree was hazardous?
Oh, absolutely. I, I mean, he recognized that this was, this, the hazards, the hazard was creating the liability. And he couldn't say that the tree was going to live. He, and as, and he mentioned the termite infestation, he mentioned the, the rot down in the middle, and, you know, I, I just, I heard, he had a, he'd gotten away from his tree funeral completely and was much more reasonable in his presentation, I thought, and much more fair, and I was very pleased to see that he was there. I mean, he really, he rehabilitated himself with me.
Each person gets two.
I just think that this is $500,000 in cash on top of everything else for the town. It's not some pawn-glued property tax projections without the municipal costs associated with it. I just think it's, the time is now. We've got people that want to be there, want to buy there, so.
Did you ever see this?
I don't know what it is.
It, it's a, it's a report from Walton Chemical on March 23rd, 2001. Walton Services inspected the property listed above, specifically the stump remaining in the front grass area of the property. In the center core of the stump, it was noted that there were termite galleries wrought and molded. The termite galleries would indicate that at a minimum, some of the core of the tree was dead. The eastern subterranean termite, the only species indigenous in this area of the country, will only feed on dead wood and on wood products such as paper, padwood, so, so forth. If we can provide any further assistance to you, call my number. And this was Paul Hoffman, Service Manager for Walton Services, Walton Chemical.
So, and this is, this is a situation too where I see, my, I know people that signed the petition, and they're furious because they feel like they were duped, that they didn't know the whole. My aunt happens to be one of them, and she is writing a letter to remove her name from trying to save the tree because she was not aware that this was private property. She thought this was town, that the front of this part was the town-owned property and didn't know that it was underneath the building. And she was furious about the way, she really felt that she got roped into something that she really didn't understand.
Excuse me, we are trying to talk about the concept plan that has been submitted, and we are taking comments on the concept plan.
And I think that the concept plan is magnificent, and I would love to see it there. I know there's been some discussion about whether it should be brick or all-brick, and I personally think it would be too heavy for where it is. I think the Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, and I don't know a soul on it, has done a magnificent job planning for this building with the architect. And that's all I have to say, and I just hope things can be elevated and much more friendly and much more respectful. And I hope this goes forward. Thank you.
All right. A letter from Cheryl, is it Tuchis?
Tugias.
Tugias. It came in email form Thursday, April 14th, 2011. Bill, I am unable to attend the Planning Board meeting this evening, but would like to offer comments relative to the plans stated March 24th, 2011. I am concerned about the position of the building on the site and the resultant massing and scale relative to the public domain. I questioned the location of the building on the Central Avenue property line and the corner tower at the intersection of Elliott and Central, which could overwhelm the street. I think further study is needed through a context site plan, massing model, site sections, building elevations, all that indicate the existing and proposed building in context with the surrounding properties. The existing building presents an inhospitable environment on Central Avenue and at the T Station platform. The building depicted in the current plans will not improve the condition with the location of the building on the property line and with the driveway parking uses on the corner. There is an opportunity to embrace the site access to public transit and the bike trail to the pedestrian traffic that these features afford through a more inviting public first-floor and public realm on Elliott and Central. The redevelopment of this property will certainly be an improvement over the existing condition. However, it also has the potential to be a true asset to the area and the town if well-conceived and executed. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. Cheryl Tugias, 660 Canton Avenue, Milton. Who else wants to be heard?
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. I concur with the, with the comments made by the speakers before me, with the exception of the tack brass, brass on the board. It is time to move on. I do not want to be the one to call in the fire department, as you suggested, Mr. Conley. Let's talk about the concept of the plan, but how can we do that when you've got everything, three preceding items continued to April 28th? When are we going to fit in enough time to go over the plans, the concepts, the materials, which is what?
This is just a concept plan. If, if the concept is approved, they're going to have to come in with a proper plan.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but what I'm saying is that I hope it's not going to be the eight years that it took Central, 36 Central Avenue to be built, coming before this board, from 2002 to 2010, before that building was started.
That's what we all hope. We all hope that.
Well, in addition, we're talking about the money that the Conleys have invested in that property, but every day, the cost of materials goes, goes up. This thing is going to be costing them a fortune with this continuation. Yeah, let's talk about the concept. Well, next week, let's come back and let's talk about something else. When you give them maybe 10 or 15 minutes, why not a whole night on this project so that we can move it along? Thank you.
Who else wants to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, I'm Gene Irwin, 120 Highland Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. I rise in support of Mr. Conley, whom I've never met. I've never met his wife, I've never met his kids. In fact, I consider Mr. Conley to be a competitor in the town, whereas my family, for decades, going back over 50 years, has owned multiple commercial properties and residential properties. He's looking to do both, thanks to the town of Milton. He originally started out to do residences in a residentially zoned lot, which I think was most appropriate to begin with, but I'm not going to beat that horse, it's been beaten for eight years. But, you know, in this town, we hear so many people say, "We want commercial business to help with the taxes." Well, you know, what's it going to be? You know, guys like him are going to get killed in taxes. That's what we do in this town. We complain that no one wants to have a business here, but we already advertise in advance that we are going to kill you with taxes. I'm going to get back to the tree just briefly, because I felt like this was a Charlie Sheen episode, just listening to people go on for eight months over a tree. I spent all day today cutting up limbs of old trees. It only takes a limb about the size of a duriflame to fall from 20 feet and kill someone. The tree Mr. Conley had on his property, although charming, it was huge. If a limb came down, forget about killing a baby or a family, it would crush a tractor-trailer. That was ridiculous. I walked up to the trunk. I don't need engineers, experts, or anyone else to tell me about trees. I've been playing in them since I was a little boy. I've been cutting them down and planting them my entire life. If you could stand anyone in this room with your both feet inside the core of that tree, not to mention the limbs, it, it was ridiculous, and the fact that he went ahead and cut 15% of his own building down, as well as the tree, it tells me that he was principled, he put the town first. And again, yeah, I've heard the comments about him being a Dorchester contractor. You know, I haven't heard anyone come and say, "Hey, this guy lived in Milton his whole life. I knew his parents, or his family's parents. They've been here for decades. He's raising a family. He has a nice property, a nice section of town, that much I do know." And I think, just like the others have said, it's time to go on. You've beaten this to death. No one's made a money. If you keep dragging this thing on, instead of having nice windows, nice doors, nice everything, all his money's just being wasted with lawyers, architects, and arborists. And I said, the fact that he had three arborists come out on his behalf and say the tree was no good, but it's self-evident. The, I say, "Just go look at the trunk yourself, stick both feet in it." And, you know, it, it was like bamboo, except giant. And the, I say, my own property, I respect trees. In the, in the town of Milton, we have a whole bunch of beech trees that were brought here by a friend of Tom Edison's. They commissioned a ship, and they brought all the saplings, the clop of beeches, European clop of beeches. I have one in my yard, eight feet off the ground, it's marked with bear claws. I love the tree. I love trees that are like it. The tree heated, heated the town a huge service. And I say, "It wouldn't take much of a limb to kill a little boy, or some guy, you know, as Brad White would say, you know, proposing under the tree." White, oh, and say, the, you know, it, it, the stuff is ridiculous. It's, it's time to get on with the project. And I say, "I have no ties to Mr. Conley, never met him." But I say, "In this town, it's hard to do business commercially, and my family knows that well. We've had properties all up and down granted out. We had one Elliott Street, we had, we still have 60 Adams Street, we have other multifamily. And I've had myself commercial properties, and I've been before this board." And honestly, you know, it, it's a, it's a waste of humanity to have all you knowledgeable people beat a dead tree to death for eight months, and he's been here now for seven years waiting to get this thing off the ground. How much longer? I went through a project, a small one up on Paradise Road. It took three years. The project would have come out a lot better had the Planning Board at the time acted promptly. It'd allow a developer like Mr. Conley to focus more resources on the actual project instead of on arborists and attorneys and just nonsense. So thank you for your time.
Who else wants to be heard?
Evening. Ari Regan, 41 Center Lane, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Just wanted to reiterate the comments that have been made. I rise in support of the project myself. To labor the point, it's time to move on, get something nice on that site. The thing is, an eyesore has been like that for 15 years, at least. Time to move on, folks.
Time to tear it down, certainly.
Exactly. And put something nice up that will give the town extra tax base. Thank you.
Who else? Okay. We'll now accept comments from the board.
I have a couple of questions. Just, I just want to confirm that the plans you went over tonight, because it was hard to see from my particular angle, are the same ones that you gave us two weeks ago, correct? Okay. One question that we've had last time, and I think it was, I think Pete asked it last time, I, I think I mentioned it back in October or November. Do you have any studies showing, and I flipped through the original binder just to make sure, anything showing your project with the mass of the other buildings around it, so we can see how they relate to the other buildings? I don't, I can't find a rendering or-
No, we currently don't have that.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay, something like that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say that the requirements for an application for site plan approval and a special permit are set out in Section 310 and Section 8D2. And we currently don't have a site plan on which we can act. And the reason that we're dealing with the concept plan is that we want to discuss whether or not the concept plan needs to be changed. And I'm going to mention a few things in the zoning. And as everyone knows, the Planning Board has no authority to waive the zoning. The zoning has to be complied with, otherwise, a project cannot go ahead. In Section J1, the purpose of this PUD zoning is partially to provide significant- is partially to provide significant amenities to the public. In J, and I would simply say, I would want to have someone address the significant amenities that this project is going to provide to the public. If it simply, if it simply is it will provide more taxes, fine, say that. But I would like to, I would like to have a statement of purpose.
Who gives you that statement of purpose?
Now, in J...
The developer.
The developer.
The applicant, yeah.
In Section J4A, there's a requirement that there be business use in that portion of the street level of buildings adjacent to and accessible from a street. That means that there's supposed to be business use on the Elliott Street side of the building. And it's to be all the way up. It's just not the case. What has happened here is that there is a lot of parking on the Elliott Street side, which is in contravention of the zoning. It specifically says, the zoning says, "You cannot have parking as a business use." That's what the zoning says. And yet, there are parking spaces, numbers, the storage and numbers 21 through 26 are along the Elliott Street side. That simply violates the zoning. We can't waive that. The planning board can't waive that. It's a requirement. Now, Section J4D says "The building can be no more than four stories, not including a basement level." This building has five stories and at least along the tracks. And the question arises, can the first story, even though it is totally above ground along the tracks, be considered a basement? We have not had the developer demonstrate to us that it meets the definition of basement in the state building code. And if it doesn't, then the building has too many stories. But this is something that should have been in the original application. That you're calling this first level a basement, even though it's totally above ground. The height is supposed to be no more than 45 feet above average elevation of the building footprint prior to construction, without fill. And I, you know, we've had no indication of how tall these towers are. But I... I mean, they're over 45 feet, are they not?
Yes, they are.
And the zoning says you can have a clock tower. It doesn't say you can have any old, any old kind of tower. It says a particular kind of tower. These towers are too tall. They violate the zoning. "Petrusions of up to eight feet are allowed above the roof line so long as the building remains architecturally coherent, attractive, and appropriate." You haven't shown us an elevation as to the top of the roof. In fact, if you look at these elevations, you're looking up. They're not looking across. They're looking up, so that you can't, you can't tell what the roof is. It just doesn't appear on these concept plans. So, we don't know whether or not there are protrusions up there. And if they are, whether or not they're architecturally coherent, attractive, and appropriate. As I say, Section J4D permits a cupola or clock tower up to 15 feet above the roof line. But it doesn't, does not any kind of tower. Section J4E, "The third and fourth stories shall be set back from the second story to maintain a scale appropriate to nearby residential areas. Setbacks shall meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building above the second floor. The planning board may grant an exception if it finds the building is set back from the lot line, sufficiently so as to meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building." I would suggest to you that this building is right on top of Central Avenue. And the bulk of the building is very significant. I've heard no one make any suggestion that the two-foot setback is sufficiently, is setback, is a setback that meaningfully reduces the appearance of the bulk of the building. It doesn't do it. Along the tracks, it's more than 45, that's because it's your, that's more than 45 feet along the tracks. And yet, it's just a sheer plain up. The bulk of the building overwhelms the tracks. The zoning requires a setback unless it can be shown that the setback from the lot line meaningfully reduces the appearance of the bulk of the building. Done, done. Section J5B, "Buildings shall not rise in uninterrupted vertical plane more than 25 feet. The planning board may grant an exception if it finds greater rise architecturally appropriate and does not cause unacceptable appearance of bulk." For me, looking at this trackside, this trackside uninterrupted rise of about 45 or 50 feet, I would say that there was an unacceptable appearance of bulk. And I think the same is true on the, on the Central Avenue part of the building. I think that there is a requirement that the requirement in the zoning should be complied with. Section J5C, "No unreleaved flat surfaces, windows, doors, etc., should project or be recessed." There are a few bays which project from the facade of the building, but the rest of the windows don't. Particularly troubling is the grated windows on the bottom of the building, which are prison-like. It, in my view, people standing at the MTA stop, looking at this building, will have an extremely unpleasant visual experience. And these windows along the, along the, along the tracks probably should have some sort of arcade over them, assuming, of course, that you can prove that these windows are in a basement. Because if they're not, they're in an extra story that's not permitted by the zoning. J5F, "Windows and doors to be surrounded by appropriate architectural elements, setting them off from the plane of the facade." I don't, I don't see that this zoning requirement has been complied with. J5H, "The back and sides must be given as much architectural care as the front. The building on all sides must present an attractive appearance." I would suggest that the appearance on the tracks, along the tracks, is not an attractive visual appearance. Those grated windows for the parking are prison-like. They need, as I say, I think there probably should be an arcade along there. But the building, as it presents along the tracks, is going to be the view you get of the building when you're coming in from Boston. And it's got to be as, look as well as the building when viewed from, from the other side of Central Avenue, according to the zoning. Section J5I, "The roof line is supposed to be visually coherent and architecturally well-defined. Mansards, cornices, and architectural elements are encouraged." The roof line shown is simply a straight line. There are no cornices. There are no mansards. There are no architectural elements whatsoever.
Excuse me, there is a cornice at the third floor, top, the third floor.
We're talking about the roof line.
That's...
The roof line is to be visually coherent and architecturally well-defined. Mansards, cornices, and architectural elements are encouraged.
Yeah.
On the roof line.
Well, this is being designed as a mansard with this cornice, which is typical of mansard design. The cornice happens below the top of the roof. Not at the, not at the top of the roof.
I don't think that the definition, I don't think the definition of cornice, I don't think the definition of cornice is such that it can be a floor under the roof line.
36 Central's a mansard, it's sloped. Yours is a 90-degree angle.
We don't, we, there's no, there's no showing of a roof.
He's seeing, he's saying that it's similar to this. This is similar to this. And what I'm saying is that this is a sloped...
He's talking about his too-tall tower having a sloping roof.
No, he's talking about this part here being visually...
Oh, he's saying that that's a mansard?
But that, that mansard is actually sloped, whereas this is...
I don't think they can have a straight up-and-down mansard.
I think mansards are sloped.
I think some are sloped, some are flat, vertical.
Well, I, I would be interested. J5K, "Ground floor business areas to be functional and present attractive inviting appearance with easy and convenient access." As I say, part of the, part of the ground floor area is currently parking and has to be redesigned for business use. J5M, "The interior spaces are going to be designed to be noise-resistant from above, below, and from all sides." And that you don't have to show in your plans, but you're going to have to give us construction detail as to the, the exact kind of construction you're going to use to comply with the zoning requirement. What?
Landscaping, J50.
Right, J5O.
Oh, sorry.
"Landscaping shall enhance the design of the building and provide attractive features which help integrate the business district with nearby residential districts." I think this landscaping is, is totally inadequate. I think that a few street trees are much too close to the street to have any chance of surviving. And I think I'm going to do one, ask Mr. Jackson to comment on the landscaping. But I don't think that it enhances the design of the building or provides attractive features which help integrate the business district with nearby residential districts. J5Q, "Usable open space. The development should respect the natural features of the site." Well, no more natural features. Okay, so, my feeling is that this building not only doesn't comply with the various zoning requirements that I've run through, but that it's badly positioned on the site. That it's all pushed up, so it's to be right on top of Central Avenue. And the reason it's pushed up, of course, is that you cut 18 feet off the back and didn't bother to move the building back when you had the opportunity. But I think the siding of the building is, is wrong. I think that it should be repositioned, and there should be landscaping, which unites the, the building with the, with the residential neighborhood. So, those are my comments on this. I don't think that this concept plan is in compliance with the zoning for probably 10 to 15 reasons, which I've run through.
It would probably help them if they could have that in printed format.
Well, they can, they have, you see, that's the nice thing about being on TV.
I'm just saying, it would be easier...
I will, I will, I will indeed write it up. But, you know, when I write it up, that's going to take some time. Yes.
I just hope they have a copy of the text.
Of the zoning?
The text, yeah, you're citing.
Well, I'm citing the zoning.
I know, but I hope they have a copy of it.
Well, as developers, they should.
If they don't, Mr. Clark, would you make one available to them?
Make me a copy, too.
Question on the commercial aspect and also on the trolleys. I actually work near Cheryl Togias, and she and I were talking about it. And she said that there, you know, there are a lot of Milton residents who ride the trolleys. And the building, as currently in the concept plan, feels a little unfriendly to those people riding the trolleys. One of the things she and I were talking about were, was have you considered that portion of Central Avenue that intersects with the trolleys there? Have you considered having retail on that side? Or something that would bring a little life, so you're not just going past the building and suddenly, there's not a whole heck of a lot of life. You're in this trolley area with that, not quite sheer wall there. So, perhaps commercially, or perhaps stepping the building back a little bit, so as you come around the corner, it's just the sightlines are a little bit friendlier to the trolley. The other thing, and I was thinking this just now as Alex is reading out the zoning, but if you are considering possibly having the building come up closer to Elliott Street, you might consider the possibility either of having a bit of a plaza here or actually integrating some more of the commercial along the trolley and some more of the landscaping, so it's in general a friendly or more attractive area. I don't know the statistics, but it would be interesting to know which of the Milton trolley lines were the most, or trolley stations, were the most used. And I suspect that gets a lot of use. And that's a lot of eyes going right past your commercial area. So, it's just something to consider as you look at that.
All right, anyone else on the board want to say anything?
I'd like to just say one thing. I'm glad that we've finally given him some direction. Obviously, Dave might have read the zoning wrong. A lot of it's left up for interpretation. Now, you've kind of put a face on it, and Emily has, too.
Well, I think that we've got to resolve that basement issue. We need your calculations of why you think this is a basement complying with the state building code.
I, I think you've, you've put a lot on the table here. And I think probably what we want to do is, is to go point by point. We'll write out responses and then come and talk about it.
Okay.
On that, that issue of the basement. We have checked that, and I feel confident that we do qualify as a basement.
Okay, well, we'll take a look.
I think you defended that before. Didn't we have that clip before you defended it?
No.
That, I mean, I think that maybe came up tangentially to other discussions. A lot of things have been kind of thrown into the pot, but, yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue this to, yes, Mr. Clark?
I have a, I hate to beat the tree issue, but...
You had to go back to that.
I have to, because just don't let Jessus call me twice now.
Yeah.
First, he called me because a newspaper called him asking, actually, Mr. Conley asked him to send a letter saying he supported taking down the tree. asked him to send a letter saying he supported taking down the tree. Then the newspaper calls. He winds up calling me, and he also was calling me because he hadn't been paid yet. I wound up talking to him today because he went to conservation, and I had asked the conservation commission for the tape, so that you'd have what took place. It didn't come in in the right format, so I don't have it for you. But again, his comments tonight were, the tree wasn't a hazard, the tree, but the tree was not perfect. He agrees the tree was not perfect. He still hasn't, he still hasn't received payment, and he was hired by the town...
What was the, what's his bill?
A thousand dollars.
Right, that was the RFP.
What?
That was the RFP, that we accepted, but accepted a thousand dollars.
He hasn't been paid on that?
No, part of what you, when you agreed to pay him was, you asked Mr. Conley to pay the bill. He agreed to pay the bill, but the bill hasn't been paid yet, and he's coming and he's, wants to submit a bill to the planning board for that money.
Well, I, he should, but Mr. Conley has agreed to do it, I mean, we will, we will...
I can't take and pay a bill that I don't have money for.
I understand that.
Right, we have to submit an...
But you can ask Mr. Conley to give you a check payable to Lars as far as, and if he refuses, then we will, since he's agreed to do that, as you recall, in the zoning, there is a provision that if he refuses to pay application review fees, that's the end of the process. And this is an application review fee, and he agreed to pay it.
He already agreed to pay.
And Mr. Conley, I would strongly suggest that you do pay it, and pay it soon.
There you go.
Failure of an applicant to pay a review fee shall be grounds for denial of the application. Just bear that in mind.
I think he's just agreed to pay the fee.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
And as you say, the...
Good, thanks. Now, we were going to, Bill?
When, what time?
The, the balance of his fee, as you recall, I said I personally would guarantee its payment up to...
I don't think you said up to...
I did actually do, and up to $300. And I will, I will do that. I think that I will see if the warrant committee wants to pay that $300, and if they don't, they don't.
You can always submit an RFT to them. Is, is the 28 enough time for you to respond? Okay, because we, I think we asked a lot of questions.
They're two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. No. Hopefully, we will continue.
7:45?
When is the, when are the other meetings? What is the 7:31?
7:30. No, 7:30, 683, 685, Brush Hill Road.
Oh, we've got the Brush Hill Road one also, Bill.
Does that, that'll take more than 15 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, we get a meeting that we could get a good amount of time at the beginning, there's a lot of things to talk about. I'd like to have some time.
We started, we've already scheduled it, hearing through 6:45.
We probably should meet on May 5th.
May 5th?
Oh, no, that's town meeting.
Yeah, that's town meeting.
There, there is no town meeting on that Thursday.
Oh, that's right, because somebody can't be there. Yeah, we could do it May 5th, I'd forgotten about that.
Okay.
So, okay.
Well, we'll meet on May 5th.
What, what time?
6:30.
6:30? And, and can we make sure that they're the only ones on the agenda for that night?
Then you may want to go 6:40, but fine.
Okay.
You won't go 6:30, 6:40.
6:40. 6:40. Gotta give us 10 minutes to, you know, discuss the notes.
Okay, Bill, you're going to have to remind us of this special date. Okay? And we will receive further comments on the, the concept plan, if anyone has them. But we're really discussing the concept plan now. As I say, a concept plan is the plan on the basis of which the plan which is going to be part of the application is prepared. This concept plan is not an adequate plan for an application, and we're dealing with it so that you don't have to...
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you understand that for people saying, go ahead and approve the thing tonight, we don't have anything to approve.
Yeah, we're kind of, you know, working it off the original plan, and it's primarily like the original plan, but of course, we have to bring it up to the same level.
Okay. I understand that, and I will, I, I said that I will, I will put them into writing, but...
We have enough time for this one.
I will put them into, but you, you do have the opportunity of getting, paying Mike for a copy of the videotape. Can he do that? He can do that, and then you can just have it for your memory book as well.
Mr. Chairman, did we discuss the landscaping plan?
We did not, no.
All right, so can we discuss that?
Discuss what?
The landscaping plan?
Obviously, Peter doesn't like, or we don't like his present landscape.
We can, we can discuss the landscaping plan next time, too.
Can you try and give any guidance on this, so that they can...
I guess the only question is if they're considering shifting it on the site, and we discuss the landscaping plan now, then it would be out of date by the time they came back to us, so, but I have, I have no objection to it.
You might, you might, you might, but it does seem to me that we're kind of a little bit, no, no, this is what landscape architects are for.
I move you to Mr. Chairman.
All right. That is a, that's a promotion. Do we have a second, however?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.